Well, it's a good thing, otherwise I would have called you out of order.
This study session of the Board of Education for March 3rd, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. While our study sessions are generally limited to our receipt of information from staff and discussion of that information and review of resolutions prior to a vote, at times we conduct votes during study sessions. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed through the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Okay, our first agenda item is public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up?
We have Sig signed up.
Great.
And our first two speakers are Antoinette Olivas and Bradley Gross.
Okay, while you are coming up, I will read the instructions for public comment for everybody who's going to testify tonight. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you've left your contact information, either a phone number or an email, on the sign-up sheet. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.70.1012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and will not be heard in this forum. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear right there in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation and for being here tonight. Go ahead.
My name is Antoinette Olivas, O-L-I-V-A-S. I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm the varsity girls' soccer coach over at Benson High School, and my understanding is that there is some talk about cutting the soccer programs over at Benson, so I just came because I'd like to talk about keeping them and how important they are. I have two soccer teams. These are my varsity and my JV girls, and they love to play soccer and I love to coach them at soccer. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I sent out a letter in the spring to girls to come and to join the team, all levels, anybody who's incoming freshman at Benson. I get fifteen freshmen a year. Some of them have never played before, some of them have played for a couple of years. We grow, we build. This year, I can say that the teams grew, their skill was amazing, their confidence grew. I had a player who scored against Madison, we tied the game, and the look on her face was amazing. She didn't think she was a very good player. I kept telling her that she was, she didn't believe in herself after that. We still talk about her goal. I have another girl who almost scored against Roosevelt. She's a sophomore. She also not a lot of confidence in herself. She played phenomenally that game. I couldn't have been prouder. She now wants to play club soccer. She went in and tried out. Unfortunately, her mom didn't let her play, but she tried out and she made the team. I mean, these girls, the soccer is doing so much for these girls. I was like them. I was at-risk, minority student, played soccer. I've played since I was nine, when we could afford it. And I love it. I coach now, I've been coaching for sixteen years. There's nothing better than watching these girls. To take it away from them would be devastating, just absolutely devastating. They ask me when soccer summer workouts start, they want to play spring soccer, they want to play indoor soccer, they want to play foots on out. It's amazing for them. It's helping their grades. I tutor them. My friends will help tutor them. I mean, you can't just take soccer from them. I know it seems like it's just a game and it's just a sport, but it's not. My best friends are from soccer, from college. They're going to be best friends with these girls that they've played with for the rest of their lives. It's a family that we're creating. It's a beautiful thing, and I just, it would be such a loss for them and for everyone to take this away from them. We can compete. We're getting better every year, the program is growing. You know, just let them play. That's really all I want to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brad Gross, G-R-O-S-S. I was a volunteer soccer coach for the Benson's boys' team this past year. During the season, I had the opportunity to see several players learn how to play soccer, but more importantly, I saw them grow as individuals by exercising those character attributes that transcend the game and usher them into adulthood. These include winning with humility, losing with dignity, teamwork, dedication, taking personal responsibility, poise, accepting criticism, and I can go on and on. These are the softer skills that are required for success regardless of overall team skill. These skills not only apply to sports, but will also provide the framework to excel as these students graduate to the talents that exist outside the structure of a high school classroom. I heard a wise man once say at a PIL coaches' meeting, and I paraphrase, "As coaches, winning isn't your top priority, it's about building character." And I submit that it's by virtue of those character skills that our teams and their constituent players will ultimately succeed on and off the field. The Benson Athletic Program not only fosters an environment that teaches students those skills, but also provides the structure and safe haven critical to the success of at-risk youth. When growing up, it was my peers that weren't involved in athletics that were getting into trouble all the time. My wife and I were recently at a tennis match where James Blake was playing against Andre Agassi. There was a person sitting behind us who, on several occasions, whistled loudly just prior to Blake's service, attempting to break his concentration. It made me pretty angry. As competitors, we understand the importance of a level playing field, and when that field is biased, we find it frustrating. The whistler didn't quite understand that, and in my opinion, it really exposed a flaw in their personality. I'm guessing they were never part of an athletic team. I'd like to think that none of my players would do that, and even if they did, they would be quickly reprimanded by their teammates. Benson has produced numerous professional athletes and been recognized in the past for having a leading physical education program. Whatever the driving force is behind this shutdown, it has fallen to the community to act as advocates for both current and future generations that will attend Benson. Everything I've said tonight goes for all sports, not just soccer. Each has its own set of challenges and obstacles, but in the end, the details don't matter. It's the community and environment that sport provides that is most important.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you both for your -- thank you, thank you both for your testimony and for your work with the students at Benson.
Our next two speakers are Anthony Stoudamire and John Slaughter.
My name is John Slaughter, S-L-A-U-G-H-T-E-R. This is three minutes long. I am here today not as a coach, nor a staff member, or even former student-athlete. I'm here speaking as a proud alumnus of Benson High School. I won't bore you with names of famous athletes or an array of alumni that form our own private Hall of Fame. I won't give you details of our storied sports programs and state titles from past and present legendary coaches, but I will let you know that our school is bonded with education and sports with great models such as Tradition of Excellence. Our entire sports program is at siege, not just football. And it is a fact that if you are a student and you're passing five classes and you've paid the sports fee, you have the right to participate in the offered sport with the school providing coaches and sufficient number of participants to form a team. That is the case in every sport at Benson High School. We have the coaches and numbers. We want to play. Our students' rights and freedoms are at risk. I am only here in response to the inability for the PIL Athletic Office to provide schedules for our fall sports. Rumors of our sports program closing, no schedules handed out as spring practices start, and the reasons behind these actions seem to remain completely unknown and unexplained and biased. During the high school redesign, we marched to keep our school open and our sports program available at our newly labeled Focus School. We now march to save our students and our sports programs. Our students deserve sports. The PIL and district are using the label of Focus Schools as an excuse to create inequity for our community. We are here because the district is allowing the PIL Sports Office to make maverick-like decisions that affect the past, present, and future of our school, students, and community. Not just athletes, we are here because of a process that allows programs to be at-risk overnight. The superintendent and board tentatively agreed to lift the cap at Benson High School and allow more students to attend. Great, more students mean more student-athletes. As we continue to produce great numbers and successful programs, prospering graduates, and educating our students, we are here again. This entire process is screwed and skewed. This is an issue about equity, processes and procedures, and unfairness. We are building and adding new coaches with experience and knowledge, many alumni like me. I spoke with Trip Goodall and understood when he exclaimed it's partly his fault not knowing what Marshall Haskins is doing. I understand what John Isaac said, and I quote, "No decision was made about cutting sports at any high school." Then, why no sports at Benson? Why no fall schedules? Might I add, our community is the entire city of Portland, and we have spoken. I've received hundreds of emails and thousands of posts tweeting disclaiming their dislike and opposition. We want sports schedules, just like all the other schools. Why release preliminary schedules? I end with a few questions. How many more times are we going to have to march and explain what we do at our school and how successful we are? Why must we continue to waste our time and energy in senseless battles? What do we have to do as a school and community to not be in this position? What do we have to do to be at the table during these backdoor conversations? And what, what do we have to do to not be in this position? We just want to be part of the conversation. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Anthony Stoudamire, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-S-T-O-U-D-A-M-I-R-E. I am the head football coach at Benson High School. I come before you tonight to speak out on the atrocity of the sports programs at Benson being dismantled. Mr. Isaac made a statement in the paper the other day that Benson's sports programs would not be cut, but also stated in the same breath that meetings with the Benson community, including site council, PTSA, and alumni would be set up. Yet Benson still does not have fall sports schedules. Meetings at this stage of the game is like talking sex education to a teenage girl who is already pregnant. What good is meetings going to do at this point? Benson needs a schedule, not meetings. These meetings should have taken place back in the fall and winter before Mr. Haskins went into the scheduling meeting and came out without his schedule for Benson. Was this his intent all along? Did his superiors know of this plan? We are talking about a process that has not been transparent and has left the most important people out of the loop, that is the Benson community. It was stated that these are preliminary schedules. Well, I have coached over twenty-five years, and there's no such thing as a preliminary schedule. Never has been, never will be. Once you walk out of that scheduling meeting, it is a done deal. So I'm guessing that Mr. Haskins had the approval of someone to do this. Who gave that approval? The Benson community would love to know. This is not about numbers. Benson had over sixty-five kids in the program last year, which was more than or equal to about half of the PIL. Benson currently has fifty-plus kids ready and wanting to play football in the fall. This is not about Focus School issues. There's another Focus Magnet School in the district, and no one is talking about cutting their program, and they have less numbers than Benson. When will the truth be told? It is a hardship to the Benson community to not have a schedule. What district official is willing to look these kids from Benson in the eye and tell them that they don't matter? Was it taken into consideration that some Benson student-athletes have been in tech programs for two years? What are they supposed to do? Leave Benson? They cannot stay at Benson and play for another school. That's an OSAA rule. Benson should not have to battle every four years for equity with the other schools. Four years ago, Superintendent Smith stated that Focus Schools would have athletics. What happened to change that? Enough is enough. We demand schedules, not meetings. Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Lisa White and Greg Burrell.
Hi, my name is Lisa White, last name is W-H-I-T-E. I am here as a parent of a Benson High School freshman, who is my daughter and is the JV girls' soccer goalie. I am also the Benson PTSA treasurer, and I'm a community member. I'm here to strongly encourage each and every one of you not to support the proposal to cut sports at Benson High School. Here's what sports means to my daughter and I. When my daughter received a letter personally from the girls' soccer coach, Antoinette, just after school got out last June, inviting her to come to practice over the summer and join the team, my daughter was over the moon. Here's a kid who has never played before, but is being given the chance to learn and to play. At the first practice, I learned that they had just graduated twelve players in June, and this would truly be a rebuilding year for the team. In my mind, I thought, what a great opportunity for my daughter to get involved from the start in what two to four years would be a great competitive cohesive team. As the summer pushed on, the girls, who were once nervous, very shy towards each other, were coming together as one group, laughing, joking with one another. On the first day of school, five of them were lost as freshmen in a huge school, different wings, multiple floors, but they saw each other. They worked as a small team to keep each member to their class. They planned where to meet after the class so they could each find their next classes. Had these girls not had the opportunity to participate in soccer, their first few days at Benson may have been very different. By participating in sports, our students are developing lifelong skills such as leadership, dignity, humility, working as a team, fulfilling responsibilities, and self-confidence. I think as adults, we need to remember that while winning is great, it is more important on how our students play the game. Did they work as a team? Were they all respective towards the players and refs? And most importantly, did they have fun? If you can answer yes to all three of these, then no matter what the score is, they have won. In the proposal, we have heard that students at Benson would have to play for their home high schools. How would this work? For kids whose home high school practice starts at 3:30, our school gets out at 3:15. For away games for the home high school, our kids would lose an additional forty-five minutes of class time just to get to the home high school to catch the bus for the game. Most importantly, some of our students would not get the opportunity to play because their home high schools are full. Benson High School is a true community school. Sports at Benson gives our majority of our students a safe haven for the afternoon before dinner versus being subject to what is happening in their neighborhoods and due to being an inner-city school. In the state of our schools and our kids being in electronical world, they do not get the opportunity to socialize as we did going to school. So now, let them have their sports, let them compete, and let them learn team building. Do not penalize us for one man's dream. We are a community and a community who unites. Thank you.
I'm Greg Burrell, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. Back with my trusty computer. Last week, I spoke to you about forgiveness. Now, I've spent the last week talking with teachers about what there is to forgive. Instead of speaking for them, I'll speak for myself. PPS substitute teachers are among the only subs in the country that have their own contract. Article 7E of that contract states in part that "A substitute on either list may remove him or herself from further assignment during a period of lawful work stoppage by regular teachers by notifying the district in writing." I'm not angry that I got a letter signed by Sean Murray threatening my job and health benefits if I invoke that clause and refuse to cross a teacher's picket line. I did, however, start looking for another job just in case. I want you to understand that this is the best job I've ever had because I get to teach students, so having to look for another job is not a pleasant prospect. I can sole myself with the fact that if I no longer work for PPS, I can run for school board director, and I'm free to move into several zones to do so. I forgive PPS for this insensitive act. Rather than forgive you for the district's bargaining strategy, I want to thank Portland Public Schools for trying the negotiation strategy that led to this contract. Seeing almost all twenty-nine hundred regular teachers standing together for the schools the Portland students deserve gave me hope. Due to your choices, teachers, parents, students, administrators, and the greater Portland community are feeling such solidarity that we can press forward. We have made a beginning. Teachers need to ensure, for example, that the PAT speaks for them. I'm just getting the ball rolling because I'm speaking as a teacher, a Portland resident American citizen, not as a union member today. We all need to forgive each other for this mess and make it truly about the children. This will not be easy because there are hurt feelings on both sides. When in doubt, please think of our children. Teachers believe that we in our classrooms have been starved as data collection and analysis have taken precedence over the resources teachers need to actually teach. The more I experience data collection, the more I clearly see how and why it's not necessarily a waste of time, but of less importance than so many other things that teachers do. The heart of teaching is the relationship one develops with the students one teaches. It's in honor of this relationship that I asked the board and Superintendent Smith to attend a meeting with teachers at Roosevelt High so they can be sure that you have heard their concerns about designing a high school that they believe addresses the concerns of business interests and the bond administration committee and architects. I have a copy of the seven-page letter that you received, and after hours of research, I have decided to support RHS teachers in their struggle to get a hearing where they will not be told the decisions about classroom size and use are already made. Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. Okay, thank you again for your comments. Please feel free to connect with our board clerk, Ms. Hewson, who can make sure she has your contact information. The next piece on our agenda tonight is a vote on the Portland Association of Teachers' bargaining agreement. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and I'd like to invite Sean Murray, our Chief Human Resources Officer, and Brock Logan, our Director of Labor Relations up. And before they walk us through the specifics of the contract, I'd like to do a few things. One is to congratulate our teachers for the ratification vote on Thursday night, so congratulations. I'd also like to recognize members of both of the bargaining teams who are with us here tonight, and I'm going to ask you to stand, and I know we've got some back there and up here, but part of what I want to do is just recognize the hard work of these teams at the bargaining table over the last ten-plus months because it's a very intensive body of work, and both teams did an amazing job at the table. Could you please stand and just let us recognize you, bargaining teams, both sides? And when I say this, it's a really, both teams come in with real clarity about what it is they believe they're trying to accomplish at the table, but then what really happens at the table is having to both retain that clarity of what you're trying to accomplish, but also be able to really listen and understand the other perspectives coming to the table to try and figure out solutions that neither one of you may have had before you sat down. And part of what happened over this ten months was actually the most significant rewrite of the contract in the last thirty years. So some of it are the big items that you've all heard about and that have much community attention. A lot of it has been really looking at the nitty-gritty about how we do our job together and how we work to serve kids in this district together and try and have clarity so that you don't have dispute. And so, a lot of it is trying to have both parties understand what we're trying to accomplish in a labor document. And this particular negotiation had broad issues in it, some of which actually belong in a labor document, some of which belong in a budgeting process, some of which belong in an advocacy process, all of which we want to do in partnership, but a lot of that were the conversations happening at the table. So I feel really proud that we actually reached a negotiated settlement at the table with the parties, that we did avert a strike. I feel just very grateful to our community and the patience and support of parents, of our teachers, of our students, of our community, and of our partners, being prepared for whatever it took for us to reach that negotiated settlement. And I think part of what becomes important when you've had a process of such high emotion and intensity is the, what do we do now that we have reached this negotiated settlement? And we do. We have a contract that I think reflects a lot of good things about how we want to do our work together, but it's really what do we now do in the go-forward that lets us use that as a platform of how we actually do that work together. And some of what we are talking about and planning to do is how we actually train our principals and our building reps in each one of our buildings in a joint training so that we all have common understandings of what the intents were in this document. And I tell you that because it's really the first step of then, how do we use this document? And how do we really change how we do our work together? And I think that's the part that I feel great hope about. But my biggest words as we go into giving you more detail are just words of gratitude for all the work that went on at that table, and appreciation, and hope for positive movement as we go forward. And with that, I will ask Sean Murray to introduce, giving more detail about the contract agreement.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. Accompanying with me this evening is Brock Logan, who is our chief spokesperson for this round of negotiations with the Portland Association of Teachers contract. Before the board is a resolution requesting ratification of a tentative agreement between the district and the Portland Association of Teachers, also known as the PAT. The PAT has almost twenty-nine hundred members, which include licensed teaching professionals, school psychologists, social workers, child development specialists, student specialists, and also audiologists. The parties began bargaining in April of 2013 and met all of the requirements of the collective bargaining under the Public Employees Collective Bargaining Act, which is also known as PEGPA. It included a hundred-and-fifty-day bargaining period, a fifteen-day mediation period, submission of final offers, and a thirty-day cooling-off period. From November 2013 to January 2014, the parties met face-to-face with each other in the company of a state mediator at least seventeen dates, several of them being marathon sessions lasting for up to twenty-two hours. All of these meetings during mediation included the PAT president and our superintendent. These meetings led to a tentative agreement in the early hours of February 18th and the PAT ratification on February 27th. We started this process over eleven months ago, and the board identified five core issues. Health -- health insurance, early retirement incentives, hiring and transfer rounds, additional instructional days, and having the state definition of competence as it pertains to our layoff and transfer process. We believe that the tentative agreement before the Board is a balanced approach to addressing the Board's core issues. We also believe that this tentative agreement makes fundamental and systemic changes to contract language that is over several decades old. And most important, we believe that this tentative agreement before the Board is in the best interest of our students. I would like to thank Gwen Sullivan, who's the president of the PAT, along with Marty Pavlik, who was the chief spokesperson for the bargaining team, and also members of the PAT bargaining team for their collaborative reach on settlement agreement. I would also like to acknowledge and thank our district's bargaining team that included regional administrators, building administrators, legal and HR professionals as well. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brock Logan, who will walk you through some of the highlights of the tentative agreement before you.
Good evening. Thank you. As Sean and Carol mentioned, this really was a complete rewrite of the contract. As a matter of fact, both parties came in opening virtually every article of the contract, and we actually even added a few articles. We did end up with a three-year agreement, but I'd remind everybody we're about in the middle of the first year of that three-year agreement now. And we have up on the screen a summary of some of these things. I'm going to go over it in a slightly different order. Under the year-workday workload provisions of the contract, we were able to reach an agreement that at the district's discretion, we can add two days across the PPS system. That's actually a very effective design, and I want to give credit to the association for coming up with a way of doing this, to where instead of mandating those two days in the contract, it allows us to do it, we can fund it, but if we end up in a funding scenario, we can back off of those days before having to lay off staff. So, while we all hope that doesn't ever come to that, we've got that ability to adjust to our funding situation at that time. It also gives us the ability to add up to three days of professional development for focus and priority schools, and also recognizes a professional development day that we've been using before the school contract, the school year begins. It wasn't specifically detailed out in the contract. We were also able to increase planning time for elementary grades teachers, the PK through five, which was an area where they really didn't have sufficient planning time, especially when you look at other districts around us. We maintain, we reached an agreement that maintains workload protections but updated the dates to 2010-11 and have a workload committee set up, or workload work group set up, to really identify the elements that impact workload, and it serves two purposes, at least two purposes. First was to address individual concerns. So if there's a single professional educator out there who feels they have an inequitable workload or there's something in their workload that needs to be addressed, they've got a venue that they can take that and have that addressed, and there's ability to make recommendations through the chief academic officer to provide relief. But also for the workload group to look at the systemic issues of workload. So what are the things that are driving workload for teachers and where are the areas that we can provide relief? So that's looking at things like, what is the impact of a new initiative? If we're going to add work, can we take work away? That kind of a situation. And as part of this, we also reached an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that adds a minimum of 150 professional educators, so PAT members, and that would be 70 in the PK through eight grades, so elementary-middle school grades, 50 across our high schools, and 30 in special education. And that is actually greater than 100% of the funding from the grand bargain in the special section of the legislature. In compensation, this contract provides for step increases, which is an increase for years of service for the first several years you work for the district, plus a cost of living increase of 2.3% in each year of the three years. There will be a slight adjustment to the scale in the second year that smooths out where we have certain steps that are different. We have one small step and one giant step. We're going to even those out towards closer. And we also recognize our full-release mentors and nationally border-certified educators by increasing their salaries by $1,500 a year. Under insurance, we maintained the 93%, 7% district employee split, so the district will be paying approximately $1,397 per professional educator per month, and the professional educators will be pitching in $117 a month towards their insurance. I think a key factor in that is that we had, our renewal this year was a negative 2.8%. And I've told people I've been bargaining insurance for 20 years or more now, and I've never bargained it where there was a decrease on the renewal, where it wasn't tied to gutting the plan. We also recognize that in the next contract, we're going to have to negotiate some changes to health insurance as a result of the Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare, as those things come forward. In the areas of higher assignment and transfer and also layoff, as Sean mentioned, we did get the state definition of competence, but we actually, I think, did one step better in that the state definition talks about having taught a subject within the last five years, but it gives no definition of what the subject is. And I think we did really work, really good work together with PAT to come up with a clear definition of what that is, where it really makes sense. And I know that teacher voice in identifying, particularly in the area of career and technical education, was important in identifying where that is and how that would be used. In doing so, we also streamlined the internal transfer process, so we're still protecting the rights of teachers that work for us to get an option of moving towards the schools if there's a place that they would rather be, but shortening the timeframe so that we can get out and be hiring teachers faster as we compete with other districts. We also modified and clarified certain seniority exceptions. We eliminated one exception. We clarified the terms by which one can be used where there's been some conflict on that in the past, and we added a provision for bilingual, multilingual teaching ability that's related specifically to the assignment, and we're going to work, we've got a date set next week, around the details of, like, you know, what kind of percentage and how do we determine that the person really is competent in that bilingual or multilingual And lastly, we did sunset the early retirement incentives that were in the contract, so those will still apply to anybody who has 15 years of service with the district in September of 2016. But an important part of this was to end the practice of incentivizing teachers to leave, particularly in areas where we may have a difficult time hiring teachers, and as we go into a time where there may be a teacher shortage and we need to be hiring teachers, it doesn't make sense to be incentivizing them to leave early. Thank you.
The Board will now consider Resolution 488-1, 2013 through 16, agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1 J., Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Director Belial moves, and Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 488-1. Ms. Hewson, is there a citizen comment?
Yes, we have five this evening. The first two, Sandra McDonough and John Hirsch.
Chair Knowles and Chair Belial. I'm Sandra McDonough. I'm president and CEO of the Portland Business Alliance. I'm here today to express our strong support for the proposed contract that's been negotiated between all of you and the Portland Association of Teachers. As you know, the alliance is a longtime supporter of Portland schools. I don't think, there's hardly been a ballot measure to provide funding for schools that we haven't supported and worked for with all of you. And so, our vision is that every student deserves and should have an equal opportunity for success regardless of their background, so they have a real chance to reach their full potential in life. We see that as being focused on a few areas. Number one, achieving, improving achievement for all students regardless of their ethnicity, their first language, or their household income, graduating more students who are responsible citizens and prepared for the next step in life, and strengthening career and technical training. And lastly, ensuring that students have access to the resources they need to be successful. We think this contract lays the groundwork for achieving those goals. We applaud all of you as Board members, as staff, and the Portland Association of Teachers for your tireless efforts to reach this agreement. We know it took a very long time and was difficult at times. We are particularly happy that you've streamlined the hiring process as was just described. We think that's going to enable you to compete for the best and the brightest and more diverse teachers for our schools. We also support the changes that help, are going to help the district and teachers ensure that we have the teachers who are the best fit for the subjects they're teaching in every classroom. And we're happy to see that all of you together focused on achieving a contract with costs that are in line with the revenues that you can reasonably expect to have and not overly optimistic estimates. As with every successful negotiation, obviously not everybody got everything they wanted. As you know, we advocated for additional changes that we felt would bring Portland's contract more in line with what other districts are doing. And while not all of the changes that we wanted were adopted, we do think that you have built a foundation that you can build from, towards a common goal of providing all of our kids with the very best education possible. We are very happy to know that you are starting already to work with the teachers on how you will implement this and that the contract gives you a lot of opportunities for that kind of collaborative effort moving forward. We think that's very important for building on the success that you have this time. So again, I want to thank the district, the Board, the union representatives for working so hard to achieve this agreement. We know it was heated at times, but in the long run, we think that what you've done is best for kids and will move this district forward. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is John Hirsch, H-I-R-S-H, speaking on behalf of all three of the Portland 80%ers. That includes Eliza Erhart Eisen and Margie Brown.
I'm with you.
And in support of approving the tentatively agreed upon labor contract. Early in the negotiations, we established five language priorities, and throughout the bargaining, cajoled both sides to remove contractual barriers that adversely impact student achievement. In studying the new agreement, we found that important positive changes were made in most all of our priorities. We're especially pleased at the streamlining of hiring, assignment, and transfer process and changing the definition of competence to enhance the likelihood of having the most effective teachers in every classroom. We thank, no, we applaud, both parties for making the necessary compromises to reach that agreement. New contract, if approved by the Board tonight, will really benefit students and the community, especially if PPS and PAT see those negotiations as transformative. That is, if recognizing that they were on the brink of creating a community crisis. Both the district and union now learn from that experience and use it as a platform for building mutual trust and rebuilding public trust, it will truly become transformative. What is written on paper will have little impact without cooperative implementation. It's the administration of the contract that brings it to life. We think there are positive signs that both parties are taking action to move from talking about collaboration to acting it out. We are heartened to hear that the parties will jointly train building reps and principals. In the new contract, that PPS is funding the workload committee in the amount of $1 million, that the committee is consisting of equal numbers of teachers and district reps, will hopefully work collaboratively toward defining and mitigating workload issues. The district recently reported its desire to entertain interest-based bargaining sooner than during this last negotiation. Trust will be earned by PPS and PAT when there are no surprises, when both do what they say they'll do on time, and when they demonstrate mutual respect to the satisfaction of the other party. We hope this spirit of collaboration will become the new norm, and this contract can be the beginning of transparency and accountability in the district. If this contract is implemented well, we see it as a significant step toward improving student outcomes and rebuilding public trust in the district and the union. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Our next two speakers, Mike Rosen and Jane Greenall.
Mike Rosen, R-O-S-E-N. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Citywide Parents Coalition, which mobilized a year ago in an effort to restore access to a full schedule for all high school students and to eliminate the culture of late arrival, early dismissal, and mandated study hall. Our group is as committed as ever to improving student access to instructional time and to staying engaged during and after the upcoming budget process. We've waited with interest to learn the outcome of the contract negotiations and the inevitable impact on high school schedules and staffing. We'd like to acknowledge the many positive changes for students that appear to have been made with this contract. Not only does the new contract appear to facilitate a more efficient and effective staffing model, it also protects the teacher-student workload and, of great interest to the Parents Coalition, adds two days to the school year and even more days for academic priority schools. Adding days will help the district reach its goal of getting in compliance with state minimum requirements on instructional hours. We applaud this decision. We are also supportive of the commitment to add more classroom teachers at all levels. We are, however, concerned about the potential loopholes as pertains to the additional days and the requirement that instructional days be prioritized for cuts in the event of a revenue shortfall. This is a vaguely defined funding contingency, and we believe it would be a mistake to go backwards and cut the added days. As for our high schools, we're eager to learn the outcome regarding the high school schedules. We've heard PPS commit to providing a schedule that will allow for 130 hours per course and applaud this necessary improvement to pass schedule allowances. Both students and teachers will benefit from this change. We would be remiss, however, if we didn't take this opportunity to say that current Oregon state minimums should be viewed as a starting point, not a goal, and to encourage PPS to continue to look for ways to increase instructional opportunities. And while the Parents Coalition recognizes that high school schedules are not worked out in the contract but rather are informed by the contract, we'd like to repeat for the record that we favor a model that is fully staffed and is structured to assist, engage, and inspire students, whether via support classes, electives, opportunities for college credit classes, or CTE. Meeting the state requirements should, of course, be a given. The Parents Coalition would also like to thank the staff for its efforts towards keeping us informed. As parents, we would encourage the Board to examine its role. There has been a lack of transparency and engagement with the broader community post-PAT ratification of the contract. Holding closed-door briefings with limited number of stakeholders minimizes distribution of information and rankles community members who have a real vested interest in outcomes and rationales.
Mr. Rosen, are you just about finished?
Yeah.
Time is up.
Engagement with the community, especially parents, students, and taxpayers prior to your vote, is important so that the community understands what impact this contract has on students and it can share its perspective prior to your vote. Thank you again for reaching an agreement and for consideration of our thoughts.
And I'm Jane Greenhalgh. I'm also a member of the Parents Coalition. I actually came to say thank you for, both to the teachers and the Board and the superintendent for settling a contract and avoiding a strike. My daughter's first IB exam was on February 20th, so our household was very happy that she didn't have to miss that. I also wanted to thank both sides for holding firm on some issues. As a parent, I'm thrilled we're going to be hiring more teachers, but I'm also thrilled that the hiring process will be more streamlined and that competency will be taken into consideration for hiring and transfers. And the two extra instruction days, well, they're a good start. I think we all know it really is just a start. Oregon sets a really low bar in terms of instruction time. I read an article recently that said a kindergartner who starts in Oregon in kindergarten and goes through 12th grade will end up with three years less instruction time than a similar student in Maryland, which I thought, that can't be right, especially as I moved from Maryland when my daughter was four. But if you add up, 990 hours in Oregon, 1,150 or so in Maryland over the course of 12 years, that adds up and certainly could explain why we, as a state, fall at the bottom of many of these academic poles. And so, I'm looking forward to working with the state and with you to figure out how we can turn that around because our students really deserve to have the instruction time in classrooms, which will make them competitive. And I think as part of that, we have to be really upfront about how bad the situation is, so we need not to count standardized testing, study halls, teacher planning as instruction time, and hopefully we'll be able to get more time in the class. So thanks.
Thank you.
And I was done early.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kim Melton. Our last speaker is Kim Melton.
No? No? Okay. Okay, I believe Peyton Chapman, president of PAPS, our Principals Association, would also like to provide some comments. And I should say also, principal at Lincoln High School.
Yes. Good evening Superintendent Smith, school board members, and student representative Davidson. I'm really excited and happy to be here. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of all of our school principals in my role as PAPS president. We want to thank you. We want to thank all of you, as well as our Portland Association of Teachers, for prioritizing the issues that were the most important to schools and our students. We're thrilled to see a negotiated settlement that supports a streamlined hiring process. You've all heard our horror stories of not being able to interview the amazing temporary teacher that we found and recruited for their position when it became open and how devastating those kinds of things have been. And we just, we really wanted you to know that you've been able to help us recruit and hire 150 of the best teachers for our students next year, and we're thrilled. Thank you for prioritizing district alignment with state definition merit and competency and giving us the tools we need to put our best teachers in the right teaching assignment that best supports students and supports teachers' success in those classrooms. Thank you for adding the instructional days to the school year. We agree with everything that's been said before. Oregon and Portland has a woefully short school year, and this is a good start, but not an end. And principals work hard to support our teachers and our students. Thank you again for prioritizing school-based needs that most affect students and achievement in our schools. And congratulations, we're all just thrilled that we're here actually having this conversation now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have a board discussion on the resolution. No board discussion?
Yeah, I have something.
Okay. Director Buell.
I'm planning to vote for this because I think it's a good, fair contract. One major concern I have is the workload committee and how we deal with that. The workload committee is the key to whether or not this contract really works for children, and we have to do something about dealing with the overburdened workloads for teachers, period. And I hope we'll take it not just for class size and class load, but we'll take it for lesson planning, testing. I mean, we're actually, seriously, I just heard this tonight, we're actually doing the Dibbles test for all our elementary schools. I mean, we're actually, if you're an educator out there, you know how silly that is, kind of, but we don't seem to know it down here in this building, I guess, so. But that type of stuff, I hope that will come up. And things like the professional development and how we work through that and how we work around it and how we set off time, I hope that will come up. Initiatives that end up in our schools, where these initiatives come down into our schools, but they haven't really been vetted by teachers and so forth. So, I hope this workload committee actually becomes a committee that actually addresses the workload. We haven't, we've had a tendency to not work very well with our teachers. We don't seem to, we don't seem to respect and value the teacher input, and it's really a major problem within the school district. And it's not just in the district, in this building, it's also out in some other schools where this is really a problem. And so, this is the opportunity now to work on these things, to make these changes that we so desperately need in this district, and I hope we'll grab this opportunity to do that. And so, I'm feeling good about it, and there we go. So, when we hit this workload committee, I'm sure we're going to really be listening to those teachers who are on it and paying attention and making changes out there. Because it's not just enough to listen, you have to also think and have dialogue, and when you're all done listening, you have to make changes where the cases have been made. And that's where we have a lot of problem, just making changes when they need to be made. I don't assume we're going to eliminate the Dibbles test tomorrow, but hopefully the workload committee will get to something like that and we will go, oh, okay, let's get rid of that, let's have, let's take care of this, instead of just going, oh, well, okay, we'll move on, which has been the tendency in my six months here. And so, I hope that we'll move beyond that, and I'm really thinking positively. Thank you.
Dr. Regan.
So, after serving as a PTA president of two schools, a site council co-chair, and an outspoken school funding advocate, I was elected to the Portland School Board 11 years ago. During those 11 years, we've hired two superintendents and an interim. We've increased our graduation requirements. We've restructured our high schools, passed a temporary Multnomah County income tax and several local levies to fund teaching positions, and we successfully passed the largest capital bond in state history. We have six different language immersion strands supporting our emerging bilingual students. Our high school students regularly win constitution team competitions and other academic and athletic forums. Portland Public Schools' graduation rate has increased for the fourth year in a row, and about 85% of families in Portland continue to send their kids to Portland Public Schools. We have so much to be proud of. Adding to this, after 20 years of living under Measure Five budget cuts, where K-12's share of the state budget went from 45% to 37%, the legislature has begun to reinvest in public education. Last session, we saw a billion-dollar reinvestment. In 2011, our community passed another local levy to help pay for teachers. In 2012, Portland residents approved an arts tax, adding 45 more art teachers. The economy is turning around, and Portland Public Schools at long last is in a position to reinvest in our kids, our teachers, and our schools. As we entered contract negotiations 200 days ago, we should have entered full of hope for our kids and schools and full of appreciation that we live in a city and a state that support public education. In fact, Portland Public Schools and its teacher union could have demonstrated to our community our appreciation for their support and our excitement for our kids by settling our teachers' contract in an amicable and positive and student-centered way. Instead, our contract negotiations dragged on, our teachers voted overwhelmingly, as they say, to strike, and as I stated a few weeks ago, this was an inconceivable place to land. In the final analysis, we did end up with the most significant rewrite of our contract with our teachers' union in 20 years, especially as it pertains to hiring and teacher assignment. As we look at a contract our students deserve, Portland Public Schools finally succeeded in this contract in ensuring just one round of internal hiring so we can get out in the market early each year to scoop up our own student teachers, teachers of color, bilingual teachers, and the best and brightest new stars out there. We have tried to make this change for decades. As we look at a contract our students deserve, our kids should expect that their teacher is competent to teach the subject material. At long last, Portland Public Schools finally succeeded in this contract in ensuring that competence is a factor with seniority in transfer and layoffs. And as we look at a contract our students deserve, our kids should expect to be in school as long as their peers from other states. Today, Oregon students have one of the shortest school years in the nation. At long last, Portland Public Schools is turning that around, adding two days to our instructional calendar. This is a start, and only a start. During the next contract negotiation or two, and with the support of our state legislature in continuing to reinvest in public education, we should set a goal with our teachers' union of adding another week or two to our calendar if we want our kids to truly be successful. And as we look at a contract our students deserve, our kids should expect that their teachers receive competitive pay, strong health care, and good working conditions. They should also expect that the vast majority of funds left over after paying for raises in health care should go toward adding teachers, counselors, librarians, and other school staff to ensure they get reasonable class sizes, robust instructional time, deep supports for struggling students, and a wide array of enrichment opportunities. To that end, every time Portland Public Schools is provided with new revenue, whether it's from a local levy and arts tax or a greater investment by our legislature, this superintendent and this school board put the vast majority of that new additional revenue into our classrooms and schools to support our students. That is our reality. On the issue of class sizes, which the teachers' union chose to exploit during this contract negotiation, the teachers' union and its paid consultants know that Portland Public Schools already enjoys some of the smaller class sizes in the metropolitan area thanks to our local levy. They know there is no way that this board would agree to class-sized language in our contract because we don't control the revenue needed to deliver on it. They know that it is illegal to strike over class size, and they know that class size should not be one of many subjects under consideration during contracts talk that is a budget discussion. Here's an example. If Portland Public Schools has $6 million to spend, we could reduce our student-teacher ratio by one student, possibly decreasing class sizes. Or, we could add a full week to our school calendar. Now, that's worth talking about. And that discussion should happen during our budget deliberations with input from our entire community, not with one union representing one group of employees. Portland School Board members run for this volunteer-elected position for the same reason that teachers choose their noble profession and decide to work for Portland Public Schools. Like teachers, we believe in public education. Like teachers, we believe in our kids and we want them to have a brighter future. And like teachers, we hope we can make a positive difference. I am grateful and relieved that we landed this contract. It represents a compromise that is good for kids. It also leaves many issues, including unnecessarily expensive health care costs, unresolved for another day. But at this moment, at this time, I am grateful to our two negotiations teams for getting us to yes. This is a better contract, and I hope that, starting tomorrow, we will look at another way to pass our next teacher's contract that recognizes that we're all in this together. There is no us and them, there's only we. And that we includes our teachers, our principals, and other support staff, our students, the superintendent, school board members, parents, and our incredibly supportive community. I'll be a yes vote.
Dr. Frack?
Yes. So, similarly, I want to thank the negotiating teams and above all, our superintendent Carol Smith. Without your leadership, Carol, we would not be here, voting on a compromise settlement that provides several key improvements, as folks have noted, that give the district the ability to ensure we can get out hiring teachers earlier, that we can place teachers based on their competence to teach, not just on seniority, contract that provides additional school days, although not enough, I think we'd all agree, or most of us would, and that extends for three years rather than two years so that we can focus our collective energies on serving our students. So, in the last contract negotiations, we worked collaboratively, the district and the union, to reform the teacher evaluation process, which was a huge step forward. And with this negotiation, we've made another huge step forward in terms of the terms around hiring and transfer and the competence pieces. So, as thrilled as I am, and I am a yes vote on this tonight, and great appreciation for the hard work by all parties, it has been, it has been hard for me to get to a yes vote tonight, which is not in any way to detract from the huge relief we all share that a strike has been averted. But the fact is, the changes that the contract, to the contract that the district stood fast on should not have been so difficult to obtain, particularly in the context of offering a generous salary and benefit package. But it was really hard to get these changes that we needed to the contract. I am deeply grateful that the teams persevered, we got the best deal that we could for our students and for the taxpayers under tremendous pressure. And I'm very grateful to the PAT team for the hard work at the table in the final weeks around issues like competence and hiring that was really good, strong collaborative work, and that gives me a great deal of hope going forward. I do want to highlight, though, that work remains for future negotiations to bring parity in health care coverage and costs across all our employee groups, to help contain our long-term costs, as well as to lift some of the remaining rules and restrictions that hamper the district's ability to manage the district well for students, for example, in terms of workload pieces around the high school schedule. So, of course, we as school board members want a contract that provides fair and competitive compensation and fair and appropriate protections for our teachers and all our employees who bust their butts every day for our kids. But we also need a contract that enables the district to manage our district in a way that is fiscally responsible and that works better for our kids. That was our bargaining strategy. Now, the board could have rolled over early in the process, but we held fast that the contract needed changes. Now, it seems to me, from my perspective, that the PAT was unused to this stance that we were going to hold fast and we needed to make those changes. And it was very disappointing to me that rather than coming to the table earlier on, say, over the summer for intensive collaborative negotiations...
Excuse me?
That the process was prolonged as long as it was. So, take class size again, like Director Regan. You know, no school board or district wants large class sizes or overloaded teachers. And we have spent, you know, year after year, we have sent money directly to the classroom to the point actually where our buildings were crumbling precisely to keep class sizes as low as possible. But the reality, of course, and again, let's move forward, but dealing with reality here because that's the challenge that we all face, is that it comes down to money. We need to find a balance amongst salary and benefit increases for our hard-working teachers and employees. We need to find money to add back teaching positions to reduce class size, and we also need to find money to reinvest in the programs that work for our kids, whether it be expansion of dual-language immersion, increasing supports for struggling students, hiring mentors to help kids stay in school and stay on track, restoring a full week of outdoor school, or any number of investments that we would like to be able to make that help our kids thrive and succeed. So, yes, of course, class size matters, but it is not the only thing that matters. I also want to push back, I also want to push back against the notion that the contract negotiation was the appropriate venue to push back against the larger outside forces of top-down mandates and disinvestment in public education that we see in our state and across this nation. So, yes, PPS does need to improve, and we should be held accountable for our shortcomings. But we're not Bill Sizemore, we're not Don McIntyre, Bill Gates, or Arnie Duncan. We aren't in charge of Common Core, are no child left behind, a race to the top, or the achievement compacts. So, it may have been convenient to pain us as the villains for the purpose of securing a more favorable deal, but the reality is, we're all in this together, and we need to work together to advocate for the schools our students deserve, above all, pushing back against the disinvestment in public education at the federal and state level that results in a large class size as the workloads, the smaller, the shorter school year, and all the rest. So, it's wonderful that our state legislature has turned the tide a bit. We are, and I know people get tired hearing me say this, but I'm going to keep on saying it, we are nearly a billion dollars short of the funding level that our state's own quality education model would provide for our students. So, in PPS, that would translate to about $80 million, or the equivalent of 800 teachers. So, we still have, even though we are grateful for the legislature's actions, we still have a long way to go before we have the ability to have the class sizes, and we want the librarians, the counselors, the curriculum, and everything else that our students need and deserve. So, as we move forward with this new contract, which does represent a huge improvement and a lot of hard work by both parties, it's crucial, as been mentioned, that the district effectively manage and implement the new, the new tools and the clarity from the parts of the contract, the many parts of the contract that were significantly improved and revised through the good, hard collaborative work by both parties at the table. So, done right, this is going to make a huge difference in our ability to hire and place the best teacher in every classroom. And I take, again, great hope from the quality of the collaborative work from both teams at the table that really got us a contract that'll work better for everybody. And I'm also hopeful that the collaborative work group on workload will help spur the community-wide conversation that we need about the quality of the schools, how we manage challenges like the transition to Common Core, and the level of funding that our students deserve, and how we can all work together on our shared goals of great public education for all our children. So, thanks very much for the opportunity to share my comments.
Thank you.
Director Morton?
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments so far, and I guess I'll build on those a little bit. I'm a yes vote on this contract. I think it puts us down a path to greater student success, and I think that's the shared commitment that, that both the teams had in, in this process. But like any, any good contract or any good agreement, it really is going to come down to implementation. And it's my belief that this implementation won't be successful if we don't find a way to, to come together and to... I think it puts, puts us down a path to greater student success, and I think that's the shared commitment that, that both the teams had in, in this process. But like any, any good contract or any good agreement, it really is going to come down to implementation. And it's my belief that this implementation won't be successful if we don't find a way to, to come together and to, to be become partners in this. And I think that's going to give us an opportunity to really realize its full effectiveness. Director Buell mentioned the, the workload committee, and I think that is, that is certainly one example of many detailed examples of where we need to come into partnership in terms of implementation. I think there are some other things that we need to find a way to work together on too. One of those, I think, is, has been mentioned, Director Acken mentioned advocating for more resources on a state level. We are anemic in our funding for public education in the state of Oregon, and although there has been movement, there needs to be much more movement going forward. Otherwise, we will continue to find ourselves in the, in the same situation. I think we also need to find alignment in the work that we do in our racial educational equity policy. Having, having a greater focus, a broader conversation about this and how it affects not only on a district level, but in each individual classroom and with each individual student, I think is going to make a difference in the implementation of this. I also think it, it, as it moves us down this path of greater student success, my hope is that it also results in minimizing our achievement gaps. My hope is that it results in, in continuing to grow our graduation rates, because at this point, what we've seen is not good enough. We need to do more. I also think in partnership, and only in partnership, are we going to be able to attract and retain and, or hire and retain the best teachers in our classrooms, especially those teachers that reflect the students in which we serve in our community. And we know the growing diversity of that student population, and we need to have a workforce that reflects that. But as we do all of this, we also have to consider and, and take very serious the relationship that we have with our students, and, and that we take time to listen to that student voice, as well as the families who, who represent those students, as well as those community members, the eighty percenters who, who don't have kids in our, in the public school system. They're a part of this, and they will certainly be a part of the success of our, of our district. So as I, as I mentioned, I am an absolute yes vote, vote, but I am absolutely committed to, to making sure that, that the implementation of this happens in a way where we all come to the table and make it successful. Thank you.
Director Carler?
Thank you. And I'm going to vote yes as well, reflecting, both Steve and I kind of got thrown on the board in the middle of this discussion. And so I'm really glad that, that we're going to end it tonight with, with a contract, so I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote yes on it. I was thinking it also might be a good Portlandia series, you know, only in, in Portland where you have a very progressive, because I've gotten to know everybody here, everybody here on this board is very progressive, ready to do the right thing. And our union and our teachers are also very progressive. So we're so progressive that we almost went to a strike. So I'm, I'm sure maybe Portlandia might like that. But so there, there was clearly tension, and I think from our standpoint, and, and everybody has said it here in their own different ways, but we need to listen more to, to our teachers who are really on the front lines. And we need to collaborate, collaborate together. And, and that's a two-way street. And so we just need to get that done. And I think that this discussion over the last 10 months has, has highlighted that. And as Carol, as you said, going through the, the, the contracts has actually helped get us to, to a place where we can do that. So I, I'm a yes. There is a, there's one unfinished business which I'm, which I'm not pleased at all about, which is, in, in today's world of Obamacare, when we are really reforming our healthcare system nationally, and it's all about providing health to everybody across this country. We missed an opportunity to begin that, that here. And, you know, I, I think we should start working on it tomorrow. There, there are absolute, there's 10 or 12 different ways, maybe 30, that we can save money and give teachers the best health available to them. And we, and we didn't, we didn't do it this time around. So I'm, I'm asking the teachers out there to think creatively on what we can do, and ourselves as well. And I think we should roll up our sleeves and begin that discussion tomorrow. So, thank you.
Yeah, so, wow. It's been a while since we started doing this, you know? Like Directors, Carler, and Buell, I, I came on at a point when we'd already started these discussions. As a student, I'm not allowed an executive session, so I think I've had an, an interesting role with all of this. But I'd, I'd like to keep the focus on the fact that although some good things got done in this contract, there's, it also exposed a lot of our weaknesses that we need to work on, both as a district and as a community. And one of those things being the fact that a lot of, I think, the frustrations that came out of this negotiation process was the fact that we have an inadequate funding level of education, in our district especially, that we all wish we could do the things that we want to do, but we don't have the money. And so, really, I mean, this, this is done for now, but I think moving on, we really need to get to the next step, which is, how do we avoid this the next time? Because, I mean, we've, we've spent so much time and energy on this. I mean, all of us that are in this room tonight, I mean, it's, it's really quite sad, really. I mean, how much time we've spent on this, when we all want the same thing. And so I would just really encourage us all to take a look at that and, you know, try and work on it. Yeah.
Director Belial?
Thank you. I'm going to be a little bit more upbeat. It's, it's felt kind of heavy, because I think this is an extraordinary contract, and I know it was hard to get here. But there is a lot of good stuff in here. There's a lot of really effective things that were done for teachers, and there were really good things that were done for students, and there was really good work done to keep us in line with our state projected funding. So I am very excited. I'm just going to say again, thank you to both bargaining teams. I know how it felt sitting in this seat, and I know what happens is, people don't know you individually, and so people begin to project things onto you that all of a sudden, for example, I heard a common refrain, "Our teachers are greedy." I know lots of teachers, and I don't know any of them to be greedy. So this wasn't about bad-mouthing or how terrible our teachers were. Likewise, for this board. This board, as Director Carler pointed out, is very progressive. I don't know anybody here who's looking to break a union. In fact, it goes against many of my own principles in that. But how do we keep, how do we keep in line with state funding? And so what I appreciate about this is, class size may not have been the appropriate discussion in the, in the negotiating room, but it is a good discussion for us to have and parlay into the state legislature. Because I believe, and I hear it echoed, some people say, "Wow, the state has finally turned the tide slightly, a bit." We cannot allow our state legislature to believe that they have fixed this. And they will think that they have fixed this. And that isn't to say, "Let's all go down and throw them out," because I know they want to also find a way. So I'm just going to encourage us all to look for ways to reform our tax system, because it isn't always just about more money. It is, how can we be smart, and how do we enjoy the sustainability that we all need and should be able to count, count on from our funding? So I, I guess I just want to thank PAT for raising the issue of class size, because it is, as we point out, whether it's the student-teacher ratio, what, however we want to call it, we know that PPS, because of our local, because of our voters, have done a better job of supporting or been in a better position to support our schools. That doesn't mean that it's good enough. And so please help us get that. In fact, I, a parent who, who came and spoke tonight at one point looked at me and said, "Would you please stop telling us to go to the state legislature? We've been doing that for years. If that is the attitude that our community has, then we will never, ever see a change." So, back to the contract. School board gets together every year and sets out priorities for, for our, for our, for our work together. There were three places where the PAT contract showed up in our work this year. One of them was under our Goal A, and it was, "The board will ratify a contract with Portland Association of Teachers that promotes and supports the district's educational goals." And again, I think this, because both PAT and the district stayed at the table for so long, we got really good wins in that area. Another place that it shows up, "The board ratifies a contract with Portland Association of Teachers that reflects the district's educational goals and goals of racial educational equity policy." As Director Morton pointed out, this is a reality, and it's something we have to do because half of our students are of color, and we have to make sure that we are serving all of our students. That doesn't mean that if we serve just the students of color, we're ignoring the students who aren't. It means that we have to build a system that includes all of those. This contract makes a great step forward in allowing that to happen. The third place it, it shows up is, "The board ratifies a contract with the Portland Association of Teachers that supports our teachers and students within a sustainable and sound budget." Again, because of the reinvestment, we are in a different place than we have been in the past five, 10 years. But let us continue that momentum. We need your help. I've heard some people even say, "Well, it's your, as an elected official, you carry more weight. You get down there." I will tell you that, yes, there is some import afforded that as an elected official, but I will tell you that if it's not backed up by our community, it rings hollow. And we all know there are competing interests. So I just want to congratulate PAT for holding firm. As somebody in fact said, I, I want to congratulate both, I think Jane, one of our speakers, said, "I want to congratulate PAT for holding firm, for knowing what's best for kids, to making sure that we didn't walk away from it." And I congratulate the district's negotiating team for making sure that they knew, both teams went back to their teams. Teacher, PAT's negotiating team went back to their teachers to figure out what was the right way forward. The district's negotiating team went back to their team and figured out, where can we give, how can we make this make sense? So I know I'm really high-energy and I'm going all over the place, but I'm very excited for this. I'm so glad that it's over, and I look forward to interest-based bargaining. This process is destructive. I heard somebody in fact describe it as barbaric. It really is something of a different time and a different place, and so I look forward, and I hope that we can move forward quickly with the new, new way of interest-based bargaining. Thanks. Yes.
I just want to say thank you to all of my colleagues for your thoughtful comments, and particularly, both the good, the good, the bad, and the ugly, I guess. So we all know that we've gone through a long process here, but we also know that there's still work to be done, and along with most of my colleagues, I think I'm looking also for a new way to have these discussions with our teachers instead of the way that we, we did at this time. So for me, this is a very historic moment. I'm going to be as upbeat as Director Belial was. The provisions of the contract with the PAT that directly affect student outcomes, and the district has worked to change for many years, have been significantly rewritten. Everybody spoke to those. Competence of teachers in our schools, provisions that allow the district to hire teachers sooner so that we can get the best and the brightest and the most diverse, provisions that allow us to lengthen the school year, and of course, adding 150 teachers to our schools. All really important for us. Yay, yes, thank you. More teachers, more and more teachers. Thank you for, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. I'd like to complete my comments first. So what I want to do is just do some shout-outs and some thank-yous. So first of all, thank you to the bargaining team, to both teams. They stayed at the table during negotiations, mediation, and impasse. They stayed after the PAT took a strike vote. They were intent on finding an agreement and not putting our families and our community through a strike. So thank you to our bargaining team. I also want to say thank you to some people that most people didn't hear very much about, and that's our service continuation team, who worked way behind the scenes to make sure that PPS was ready to serve our students and families in case of a strike. So thank you very much to that group. Thank you to our community leaders and organizations who stayed informed and continued to work with both sides without intervening directly in the process. I think it allowed us to work out the issues that we needed to work out without that outside influence. A negotiated agreement, I think Director Morton said this, a negotiated agreement is one that everybody gets something that's important to them, but they also have to give up on other important issues. So for me, this is a time of celebration. PPS and PAT stayed at the table until they found compromises. Both teams stayed at the table until they, till they reached a negotiated agreement. This is hard, hard work. I know the teachers know how hard that work was. I know the PAT bargaining team knows how hard that work was, and the district certainly knows how hard that work was. They stayed, and they worked it out. That's something that other districts in this state and in this country have not been able to do. So I'd like to have a round of applause for both of our bargaining teams. So now the hard work begins. Let's take lessons learned in listening to each other during this process and, and apply them regularly to the work we continue to do. Some of my colleagues have mentioned some of those possibilities. Workload and advocacy for greater funding is one that really strikes my heart. And this is an effort that I look forward to, working with both everyone here, our communities, our business community, families, teachers, everyone, on helping to raise the funding for our students and provide even a better education for them. So thank you very much to everybody. Okay, the board, so the next is the vote. The board, the board will now vote on Resolution 4881. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 4881 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you to everyone who testified, and to my colleagues, and to everybody who's here to, to see this historic moment. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Gwen Sullivan, the president of PAT, to the speaker's table. She'd like to say a few words.
So I feel like I come, I have my prepared remarks, and then it's really hard for me to sit and to listen, not only to your comments, but to other comments that I've heard. So I feel like I come here as a, a bit of a truth-teller, one through negotiation, since I was at every single meeting, every single sidebar, every single execu, I was at everything. So I feel like I come as a truth-teller. And with that truth-teller, I, I do think that I, listening to the Benson staff and community, I am a little taken aback. I had not heard anything about getting rid of sports. And of course, at Benson, I, PAT, representing what is best for all kids, I'm sure you would agree that sports rolls in, even though I'm not the biggest sports fan in the world, I recognize what that means to kids. And so I think whatever is happening there, that needs to be definitely considered in a different way, because they deserve to have sports just like everyone else. There are also some things that are, I, I feel like, as a truth-teller, that we have to look at the word "collaboration." And we have to define what that is, because it seems like we're, we're saying two different things. When we talk about collaboration, it does mean coming together, coming and finding out solutions that actually make sense, and you've come up with together. And you collaborate, and you listen, and you react. I think that's something that is possible for the future, and something that did not happen in this process. Director Buell, you talked about the workload committee, and I agree with you completely. And I, and I think, Director Morton, you said the same, how important the workload committee will be. I, I absolutely agree. I think it is an important component to actually address issues now. I would suggest that you would be on those committees if possible, because I think that you, as board members, being part of that and listening to what is happening is really instrumental in seeing what is happening on the ground. I have to say, I, I've heard things about insurance, and it's really, really hard to, to hear that, because... because we know, all of us know, that insurance, there is a crisis all over our country when it comes to what's happening with insurance and the cost of it. I would hope, though, that instead of turning it at teachers, that the teachers are the problem with their health insurance, that really you'd look at the bigger issue, that really it is the systemic issue of how all of this money goes into, that we would fight together against how the insurance companies make most of the money and not the doctors and the healthcare providers. Moving on, I have to say, as we're looking at different ways to have new discussions about some of the things in this contract and in our schools, I would repeat a question that I came to board leadership well over a year ago, asking to meet on a regular basis with board members. And so, I would repeat the offer to meet on a monthly basis at a minimum. It doesn't have to be organized. It doesn't have to be agenda. It is a time to really be able to talk about what's happening. So, I repeat that offer again. Okay, so, speaking of all of the things with this negotiation, I think I have been asked over and over by colleagues and the media, my friends, my family, how do you feel about this being resolved? And I would need to be honest to say, it's pretty complicated. And it's a complicated thing to answer. First, I would say that I feel a tremendous sense of pride, that I am proud to be a public school teacher. I am also very proud to be part of a group, a union of amazing fellow educators who work tirelessly every day on behalf of their students. I am so proud that Portland teachers, despite being vilified and blamed for problems we didn't create, remain committed to standing up for our students, our schools, and our profession. Second, I am humbled. I am humbled by the overwhelming show of support and solidarity from parents, from students, and the community. The outpouring concern and encouragement are what kept teachers going through some very difficult times and made it clear what we have been saying from the beginning, that we are all in this together. And last, I must say that I am deeply saddened. From where I sat, remember, having been involved with every single meeting and every part of this, where I sat, at times, this contract bargaining was ugly. It was mean-spirited. It was divisive. And what is worse, that I truly believe it never had to be this way. Contrary to popular belief, the collective bargaining process can and should be a way for two parties to come together to talk about students and the future of public schools, to problem-solve, and to move the ball forward for kids. There was hope from the beginning that we would bring this proposal that was centered around the schools our students deserve, and this was not a gimmick. This was not smoke and mirrors or a power grab or some ploy to get parents and the public on our side. For teachers, those weren't just words on a page. It was true that the honest reflection of what we believe for our students and what they deserve was what we need as teachers to help our kids, every single one of our kids, to have success in the classroom and in life. A board and district administration who are truly interested in learning about what is happening on the ground in our classrooms would have welcomed to have such conversation. Instead, we, the response we received was, at best, dismissive and, at worst, hostile. Sometimes, these conversations are hard. They can get uncomfortable and you can disagree on a solution. But the absence of these kinds of conversations were the result that would not be in the best interest of our students. I wish PPS would have treated this contract bargain as an opportunity to learn and to grow. Instead, I feel like you treated this as a zero-sum game. You could only win by teachers losing. And for us, this isn't a game. This is about our students, our lives, our profession, and our community. We weren't interested in creating a system of winners and losers with this contract. It was our goal to provide teachers with the time, the tools, and the resources they need to make things better for kids. Ultimately, I hope you understand that it's students who lose with this union-busting approach that the district has employed. So, back to the original question, how do you feel? After 10 months of being disappointed, heartbroken, and angry, I will tell you, I remain hopeful. I am hopeful that you, as our elected leaders, understand the folly of the failed strategy that brought us only two days out from a strike. I am hopeful that you see us as dedicated teachers with expertise, passion, and skill, but not as adversaries. I am hopeful that you stop blaming teachers, this teacher's contract, for every federal, state, and local system failure, as well as each and every challenge facing students. I am hopeful that things will change. One thing, however, Portland teachers are more united than ever, and we stand shoulder to shoulder with this growing community of education activists and advocates. By continuing to work together, teachers, parents, and students, and community members, there is no end to what we can accomplish for students and our public schools. I look forward to working with you, not against you, in the future. Thank you.
Okay. On February 10th, 2014, the board approved Resolution 4872 to provide temporary delegation of authority to the superintendent. Now that we have an agreement with the PAT, the board will reconsider Resolution 4822, rescinding Resolution 4872, the temporary delegation of authority. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Director Morton moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt 4822, Resolution Number 4822. Ms. Houston, any citizen comment?
No, there's none.
Any board discussion on this? I don't think so. The board will now vote on Resolution 4822. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 4822 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, at this time, we'd like to take about a five-minute break. Thank you. Will the board members please return to the podium? Okay, to move forward on our agenda, we're about to have a discussion on the 2014-15 budget pertaining to district staffing. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, except I also need some people to return to the podium. So, I am looking for Sue Ann Higgins and Sarah Singer. Oh, you're right here. Okay, great. Come on up. Sue Ann Higgins, our chief academic officer, and Sarah Singer, her assistant, will take us through district staffing. So, part of what I want to do for the board, who is partly missing, is just tell you what it is we're going to do and where we are in the budgeting process. So, as you know, what will be coming up in the budgeting process is on March 17th, I will be presenting to you both a district staffing plan and budget priorities that will include two parts of the budget. As of that plan, we intend to push "go" on staffing the day after that plan is presented to you, which is similar to what we normally do. But this is to allow us to take full benefit of getting out and doing our early hiring, okay? What will then happen between March 17th and March 31st is I will then be out doing listening sessions based on the things that you hear about on March 17th. I'll do three listening sessions with students, hosted by students, so Andrew will be one of the hosts and organizers, second by Coalition Communities of Color, and third, a parent listening session. So, I'll get three specific sets of perspectives back. On March 31st, I'll come back to you and actually do my budget proposal and deliver the budget book to you. So, that will include the full, both the staffing and overall budget recommendations. It then transitions to you, and you are out doing your listening sessions, and then you have your opportunities to tweak whatever. So, tonight, and part of why I'm walking you through all those parts is because what you will hear tonight, and we've done a number of community processes that have fed this budget so far, so, for instance, we've done a lot of listening actually already about district staffing. You just heard that we've got 150 staff that were part of our discussions with PAT, 70 of which we know we're going to allocate at K through eight, 50 of which we'll allocate to the high schools, 30 of which we'll allocate to special ed. But within that, then there are prioritizing and competing values, some of which we're going to walk you through tonight, because those will be the decisions that I will then be making more specifically, how we allocate them. Are we just changing the ratio? Are we adding librarians? Are we prioritizing counselors? So, some of these are there within those grade bands. You then have other priorities that, part of what we'd like to hear tonight, we'll walk you through some information. We'll ask you to do some clarifying questions about the information, but then the real interest is to hear you discuss where your priorities are, not to come to a decision. So, it's not looking for you to come to some, a decision. It's for us to be able to listen to, how are you weighing all of the various priorities, okay? So, we'll pose two questions at the end of this that are really the places that are helpful to me then in putting together a budget, okay? With that, Sue Ann Higgins, I will let you introduce.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight and just share with you the work the district staffing team has been doing. So, one of the elements that's been referenced this evening is the exciting opportunity of the addition of 150 PAT members. And as the superintendent described, distributed over the system. And so, our district staffing team is always active this time of year, listening and then making recommendations to the superintendent about how to distribute staffing. Unlike most of the prior years in the last decade and more, we are excited to be making a big addition of teachers instead of figuring out where cuts should go. So, I'm really pretty darn happy sitting here in front of you right now to do this. So, our work, of course, is to align the resource allocation with board priorities and policies. And two key ones as it relates to staffing our schools are our milestones focus on increasing achievement for all students, with particular attention to accelerating achievement for students we have historically underserved. And also aligning with our racial educational equity policy, where the board has directed us to make certain that resource allocation works to eliminate the disparities caused by past practice and past resource allocation. So, with that in mind, our prioritization looks to align with the parameters of the newly laid-out agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and the school district, applying the racial equity lens tool, which is to say, understanding what are the impacts of any resource allocation, who's advantaged by it, who would be disadvantaged by it, what can be done to mitigate any disadvantage-ing so that we meet those prior stated goals. Also, alignment to our guiding principles, and we'll walk you through the three guiding principles established by the district staffing team last year that we're pulling through again for this year. Also, looking at what is the size of an impact. So, some resource allocation affects a smaller number or, and other resource decisions can have a more comprehensive impact. So, sort of looking at how those things guide our recommendations. And finally, the immediacy of an impact. Is it something that will improve things in the short term? Or is it an investment that helps build a foundation for a longer-term improvement? So, all those things are under consideration. So, the district staffing team's focus is distribution of full-time equivalent FTE, well, all of the staffing, which we consider by the acronym FTE or Full-Time Equivalents. Our charge is to advise the superintendent on staffing the schools and to align, as we said. And finally, what we are working hard to deliver in the short term is recommendations on how we would prioritize the addition of the 150 new PAT-member FTE. So, the four pots of resources that the district staffing team looks at allocating are, the largest one is the general fund staffing, and then the other three are staffing that comes through the ESL department allocation, the Title I allocation, and special education allocation. So, what are some of the factors that we know right now about staffing? Well, the first is that we have an increase of at least 150 PAT positions in our schools. And those will be distributed with 70 of those positions going into grades pre-K through eight, regardless of school configuration. So, that would include middle schools, pre-K fives, pre-K eights, and 50 of the FTE going to high schools and 30 to special education. Another thing that we know, coming out of our recently concluded negotiations and your just ratified contract with our teacher partners, is that we need to allocate and make certain that all schools meet a planning time requirement for elementary teachers. That's a new expansion of that time. And so, some of that will be done through schedule revision, and some of that will require some small additions of FTE as well. Also, we know we've got an expedited timeline because we do want to utilize the new opportunity to have a staffing process for the schools that moves forward quickly. And finally, we want to continue or pull through the guiding principles and theories of action from last year's staffing work. So, as a reminder, and this is review for most of you, and we'll just explain this for those of you who are new and those in the audience. And so, so, instead of looking at what should we do here or there, or having resources allocated in random fashion, we worked hard last year as a staffing committee to come up with theories of action and then to staff towards those actions so that we would have the biggest net impact, given that budgets are still quite thin, and we know we want to get the best out of every addition. So, our first action was to make some strategic investments and therefore, resource allocations of teacher FTE by school type and achievement needs rather than simply by school size. So, in the past, if you were a small school, there were just certain things that you ended up having to live without. And we looked at that and felt like that wasn't representative of how we wanted to support our schools. Additionally, you had schools who had struggled as a result of the impacts of No Child Left Behind transfers and other, the impacts of gentrification and other impacts that we wanted to reduce. We also had the assignment of priority and focus status by the state for lowest-performing schools. schools. And so we made the determination to target those schools for additional scoops of resources in the form of FTE. So that was our first action. Our second one was, is, to provide clear direction to schools on how resources and administrative support must be used. So one of the things that had caused unintended inequities across the system was schools utilizing resources differently, or, and so we found that we had places where it would be really important for cohesion in the system and for all schools to be both having local flexibility and autonomy, but also having some resources where we were directing their allocation in order to have a real strategic impact. And we'll talk a little further about that. And finally, our third resource allocation guiding practice is that we would provide enough time for a resource to shift culture and build capacity. So this was to restrain us from assigning resources one year and then six months into the next year when we're making allocations again, to say, yeah, we don't know what kind of impact that's having yet, so let's do something different. And so the effort here really is to make investments so that schools can count on having those for two or three years at a time, and we're really doing action research about what's the impact of those resources. So with those theories of action in mind, we looked first at what are some of the existing challenges in our system across grades pre-K through eight? And so we've just enumerated some of them, although we know that this is not a completely comprehensive list. So from achievement perspective, there are schools that have struggled to implement our whole core program. There are others where many, many of our schools are struggling to meet our ambitious goals of having every single student reading to learn by the end of third grade. So our early grades literacy is a challenge. There are significant achievement needs at our focus and priority schools. Those are only Title I schools, but we have those achievement needs in other non-Title schools as well. Meeting our new contract provision for teacher planning time in grades pre-K through five, and limited or no counseling resources assigned to some schools, so that's a concern. We currently have nine small elementary schools that do not have an allocation in their support table of counseling resources, so a consideration about that. We have unique staffing challenges and opportunities in schools that host both a neighborhood program and a dual-language immersion program. Another is other unique configurations, so schools on a split campus, or schools with unique grade configurations. Certainly, class size is an element of challenge across the system. And finally, the support and retention of new teachers. So we've got this great opportunity to bring new folks on board, and we want them to find a home here, to feel engaged and supported here. And again, I just would say that with the challenges that we've listed, this list are things that teacher FTE may be able to impact. So there are many other things that we're looking at in other parts of the budget and resource allocation. So this is specifically related to staffing. So in the materials the board received, you also saw some possible ways that staffing could allow us to approach improving each of these challenges. And so while I won't read every single one of them, what I would want to highlight is some of these could be affected with very strategic additions. So where we would say we would like to increase the counseling resources, librarian resources, reading specialist resources at a given set of schools or across the schools. With 70 FTE and 65 schools in this grade band, it's a small resource to allocate and a really substantial impact in any school. So how to be strategic? And I want to also clarify a term that we use throughout here, which is about staffing formula or staffing ratio. So from the general fund, the majority of those staffing resources are assigned by a per, number of students per teacher allocation. And so one of the things that we could do with these new resources is sweeten those ratios so that there are fewer students assigned by ratio. And again, this is from an allocation perspective, ends up looking slightly different on the ground at a school because you have different numbers of kids in different grades, and there are other restraints on that. But, so, we also talked about, I want to see if there are any of these specifically. We also had some newly identified focus and priority schools this year. So one consideration would be to add an allocation to those schools as well, like the other focus and priority schools we have. So newly added to the list this year would be the two schools that will be completing their school improvement grants or SIG grants. So that would be King Elementary, and when we talk about high schools, Madison High School. Additionally, we had three other Title I schools identified by the state with the term called "other" Title I, meaning their achievement also needs particular attention from the school district. And so our theory of action would include them as a type of school that we would want to have a unique set of resources for. That, and those schools are, yes, George, Lee, and Boys Elliot Humboldt. You weren't sure I was going to remember them all?
Just getting ready.
All right. So on a second slide here, again, looking at these, oh, yes.
Are current ones be taken off the list for next year? Have we made?
They would not for two reasons, by our theory of action. One is that none of them have come out of the state's designation yet, and also that it's a four-year designation from the state. And so our theory of action about leaving resources in place to really have their full effect would apply in this case. Although we do see growth in some of them we're really excited about. So.
So you have seen huge growth. They still stand there no matter what.
Okay. Let's see. So again, some possible suggestions of how you would impact things. So we could add to the allocation for focus and priority schools. You could decide to focus your resources only on those schools, the new resource set. You may want to distribute a little long way or more to fewer schools. So this is really where the tension is in making these recommendations, is what's most strategic. One of the ways that we could come at our early literacy challenge is to add licensed media specialists back to all of our schools with grades pre-K through five. Another way to do that might be through instructional specialists or reading specialists for those schools. And there are others. One might simply be enriching the FTE allocation by ratio so that principals could target those resources towards grades one and two, or K one and two. So again, there are many ways to come at these. All right. Yeah. And then in terms of high schools, again, we've enumerated some of the challenges that we could, that we believe could be addressed through FTE allocations. So this will be 50 FTE over our high schools, so it's a slightly larger percentage of FTE, given the number of schools. So some of the big challenges in those schools include students often, too often, are not passing all their freshman courses. And so students, we know in PPS, if students are not tracking with at least six credits in the core areas, at the end of their freshman year, they're much less likely to persist and graduate in four years or even five. So we want to really get at that. So how do you do that? Achievement needs in our focus and priority schools have been named. We know that the counseling ratio right now, which is close to 400 students to one counselor, doesn't get close to allowing our counselors to really have the effect that they could have. So one thing that the allocation could go towards would be lowering that student to counselor ratio to 300 to one or 350 to one, so making changes there. We know that we've got a lack of capacity to offer interventions in high schools. And so the work of school social workers could affect this. Other resources that would allow opportunities for teachers to collaborate and have a more coherent sense of supports for students. We also have challenges around just relevance in our curriculum. And so we know that college and career-focused courses are a key here for incentivizing students to stay in high school. We certainly know that we're continuing to build towards fully staffing our schools, whether there is a seven-period schedule or an eight-period schedule. And we have schools with high concentrations of emerging bilingual students, particularly students who arrive to a school in the US or a school in PPS during high school who are still learning English. We want to make sure that we're supporting those students. And finally, the support and retention of these same new teachers that we're talking So we enumerated again for you some possible staffing solutions to look at that. So instructional specialists have been shown in our high schools to have a really big impact in terms of supporting multiple teachers and academic teams looking together at how to strengthen practice, how to accelerate learning, and bring all students to benchmark and beyond. Improving class size averages is an important one. We could certainly also staff so that that was targeted towards the freshman academies, so that those students had the smallest classes and the most ability for their teachers to support them. Another opportunity would be, as we talked about, the counseling resource, looking more at CTE opportunities. So we could assign resources and then have an expectation that enhanced electives or other college and career readiness opportunities were the focus of those resources. And finally, other wraparound services, as I said, a school social worker, QMHPs, those would be mental health professionals in the school, all of those members of the PAT. So looking at how might we make strategic additions, or simply, we could, again, sweeten the ratio, improve that ratio assignment of FTE so that there is simply more distribution broadly of teachers. Yes.
Is there a relationship between the CTE, X-Man Career Learnings, and the counseling? Those are separate, correct?
So they are listed as separate, although certainly for students to really utilize those resources well, we know that counselors being able to just see more of the students they support would help that alignment, would help provide access to those, and help counselors who get to know students well, then better match them with courses that would be highly interesting to them. So, and then we've got just a little bit more to walk through.
So starting to get some rumblings for questions. So let me just say to the board or my colleagues that unless you have something that's just a clarifying, something that's in the attachments, let's wait till we get done, and then have a, then there'll be plenty of time for discussion.
So we'll provide some clarifying question time, and then I know the superintendent has particular questions for you to address. So we're nearly there. So we talked about the opportunities and challenges of schools hosting dual-language immersion programs. So again, that could be one of the areas of focus for FTE allocation, the concentration of emerging bilingual students in a school, additional support in those schools could be possible. And in just a moment, I'll walk you through potential staffing solutions coming through our ESL and special education departments. And so we also have looked at piloting a college, a career, college and career exploration course, or I'm trying to find the right word here, for freshman students as one of the allocations, either as a pilot at one or two schools, in order for us to look at, how can we really be embedding college and career focus in our schools and carry that forward? So how would that be an investment that we would do now, but that would carry through and help us as a system deepen that work, which we know is really connected to all of our achievement goals? So in special education, there's a new allocation of 30 FTE. And so the special education department recommends the following, that we, first of all, focus on caseloads. So their recommendation would include lowering the caseloads of learning specialists, of speech-language pathologists, and of school psychologists, all of which have grown very thin over years of cuts. Another area of proposed focus would be early learners. And so to have the early childhood evaluation team be able to provide support so that schools, particularly as students are arriving throughout the year, can have that support. Another area is to have an instructional specialist focused on the work of life skills classes and other focus classrooms. This is an area where there are a lot of demands for teachers, particularly new teachers. We'd like to really provide support there. Also, looking at bilingual, bicultural school psychologists. So this is an area where we have significant concerns that emerging bilingual students are over-identified for special education, and that a more bicultural approach would allow us to more appropriately assess those students and support them. And then finally, having some paraeducators in special education that could move, be moved from school to school to support emergent issues, support onboarding new students who come after the school year has started, and so forth. So those are some of the suggestions there in terms of strategic additions with, again, a big focus on improving caseloads. And then in ESL, there's not a new FTE allocation, but they are in a hold-steady pattern in terms of allocated FTE. So the recommendation would be to keep the ratios the same, but to make some specific FTE allocations. One of those would be a clear challenge for teachers, the ESL teacher in a pre-K eight school, who's the only ESL teacher, is then supporting nine grades. And that has proven really impractical and just really a tough assignment. So the ESL department would like to make certain that we don't have singleton ESL teachers in pre-K eights. Also, instead of having the disruption of adding FTE once the school year has started, trying to allocate more of the ESL FTE earlier to those schools that are close to the top of a ratio. So if you were to get a new allocation of another .5, if you had 50 students and you've got 48 with the projection, then to go ahead and tip that additional resource in rather than waiting to see if those students show up later, is much better to schedule everybody from the get-go. Another would be looking at schools with split campuses, where it's very difficult to support multiple grades and multiple campuses. Also, we have schools that are piloting a content-based English language development program. We'd like to provide, even if the numbers in those schools are down, we would like to hold steady on their FTE. And then also to maintain at least a .25 allocation, even when schools have had a reduction in students. And then finally, to make certain that the school who will be hosting our Vietnamese dual-language immersion program would have ESL FTE in order to support the initiation of that program next year, as our newest program and the one where we'll be developing both curriculum and a whole new plan. So, all right. So that is our snapshot of some of the opportunities and some of the challenging decisions, and...
So part of what we're thinking is, if you guys have clarifying questions that give you the information you need, we'd give you like 10 minutes to do clarifying questions. But what we would really like, and I'm going to tell you the two questions... But what we would really like, and I'm going to tell you the two questions so you can make sure you've got the information you need. The two questions we wanted to ask, one is, how do you prioritize strategic adds for non-classroom PAT members, meaning counselors, librarians, instructional specialists, or social workers? And weigh that up against improving the ratio to add teachers? And if I just do you looking at high schools alone, and you look at fifty teachers going into our high schools, we've had in high school system design, we identified that we wanted to go from a one to four hundred ratio for counselors to a one to three hundred ratio, which takes us like seven FTE, is that what we said? Seven FTE that we just take off the top and add to counselors. You could do those two things and do a significant add to teachers, but also get your counselor ratio. If you start saying, we want to do this, 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 you might end up with tiny amounts of FTE and have way less strategic impact. So part of what I'm looking for here is, both at the K eight level and at the high school level, are there things that stand out to you as things you'd want to do as strategic adds? And how do you weigh that up against just doing straight, we, you know, we're doing a teacher add that impacts the ratio? So that's question number one. Question two, how directive do we want to be to schools on priorities such as career learning? So if we're giving X number of teachers, we say, we want you to prioritize adding another, you know, putting a, making sure you're adding career learning as one of the things. And sometimes we are like, we always are looking for a balance in the sweet spot between what schools get to direct and where are we getting more strategic impact by saying we're doing guidance across the system? So those are the questions. So you got a couple of minutes to do clarifying questions with these guys. And then we're really looking for the conversation amongst you guys as opposed to back and forth with staff.
Steve?
Your two questions, that gives me sixty-eight, not counting follow-ups.
These are just clarifying questions.
So I want to know when the sixty-eight are going to be asked, is what I'd like to know. Do I get, do we sit down, do I sit down with the superintendent? And maybe, Sue Ann, we sit down for an hour or so?
You can come on in and do the sixty-eight.
Or do we, you want all sixty-eight now, or how do you want to do it?
We had this discussion yesterday.
Okay.
And I think that you and I agreed that the best thing to do would be, one, clarifying questions. Two, two, an ability for you to ask the questions that you want and that are most important. And three, that you would sit down with Sue Ann and talk about the other kinds of questions.
No, I was, we sit down with the superintendent and somebody else. Now, I asked about that and was told, and was told by the superintendent's staff that I asked that, yeah, we'll look at that maybe.
Let's, yeah.
Are we going to look at this, or, I mean, so?
Why don't we start with clarifying questions? What have you got?
Well, it depends on whether I'm going to ask a sixty-eight. I don't think I'll go first.
Okay. Anybody else? Matt?
I'll go first then. I also have sixty-eight. No, I'm kidding. The.
See, you're sixty-eight.
I, you know, you have a hundred and sixty-eight. The, I do have a question though, because one of the challenges that we had last, in October, when we taught, when we added, added FTE back to, well, not back, but we had opportunity to add FTE to our schools. A lot of that, we saw in sort of a fractional way. So we brought a point five FTE up to a one point oh FTE. Now, it can be argued that we didn't see an actual number of professionals increase in the building. We saw the amount of time professionals were in the building. But I have a question as to how much of this is going to be sort of fractional increase? Or it's probably impossible to ask or answer at this point. But how much of this do we expect to be fractional increases like that, like a point? And I know point five is probably the largest addition that was created. It was probably like point one-two infinity. How much of it, or are we really going to see new bodies in buildings, new professional bodies in buildings? Because I think that was one of the expectations that was really attached to this one hundred and fifty new teachers.
And I think that, so we've been paying a lot of attention to how might we be able to track these additions? So for instance, if by a ratio change, a school was assigned an additional one point three-seven FTE.
Right.
Pretty easy to see how you add the one, and how do you show the point three-seven? So if you, so let's say you thought, well, so you can certainly do that. And you may have other slivers of FTE, or you may be able to add additional parts of time to already part-time staff to make them whole. So you would count those in the addition. But so let's say you said, no, we'll only allocate in pure whole FTE or half FTE. Right. If you do that, however, in reviewing what the FTE allocations in the schools already are, they are, they look like twenty-three point six-four and sixteen point seven-two. And so they're, they are already allocated in fractions. And so you don't actually, so we are looking at how to, how to navigate that.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not advocating for that at all, only using whole, whole FTEs or half FTEs. I, the system doesn't, I mean, isn't set up at this point to allow for that, I think, or allow for it to, so it wouldn't make much sense. But I'm just interested, when we're looking at bodies in the building and increasing those numbers and affecting ratios and improving opportunities for adult, adults to have relationships with kids, how do we, how do we do that where it's really with a new body in the building versus a? I just think we have to be clear about it. You know, FTE is increasing, but FTE does not equal a body. It equals, you know, the, could be equal fractional addition of an FTE. Was that fully confusing?
You know, when we did add the arts teachers, we actually did do it in point, in increments of point five. Was that what it was? And did, you know, you bumped up or you bumped down depending on how close you were. But you could really look at what were the additions in, in increments of point five, which is different than what we normally do.
Right. Go ahead.
Well, and I wonder if some of that discussion is part of what we're discussing. So for example, if we're directive this evening, or we're thinking that, no, we want librarians in every, every school, you're going to see for schools that don't have a librarian, an increase in librarians. If we say, no, we're really feeling the, improve the student, teacher, student to adults ratio, you may not see bodies specifically. So I think that's part of what you've kind of teed up some of the discussion for tonight. My clarifying question is, do all these assumptions, these walkthroughs, assume that we've already invested at least at a minimal level for the dual language immersion? Like, there are things we've committed to in previous meetings?
Continuing this year, this last fall's investment.
Right.
Okay, so yes, when we're looking at this next budget, we're looking at building on the current investments that we already have. So those going, moving forward, the amendment we just made, those moving forward. And things like the dual language immersion are going to show up in the central school supports and the central budget as opposed to in here. So that, so there are some things, when you start talking about them, I'll tell you, I've got that over in the other category.
Okay, that's helpful. So I had, maybe it's, I don't know if it's a similar clarifying question, it may just be a comment, but I just a concern around the special education piece. And it may be that this, again, this process isn't where this is going to be addressed, but just to, you know, the whole issue of wanting to pilot moving away from an exclusionary model to a more inclusionary one and as well as aligning assignment for special ed students within a cluster in a way that's much more supportive and coherent. So that's just, you know, identifying those as, as interests or concerns. And I don't know if that would be, you know, so that's just something I want to put out there, because I don't see it on this list.
So when I'm looking at improving the student teacher ratio, which I think we have at some point through our negotiations, that some expectations there, or prioritizing strategic adds, I guess I want to understand if we're talking about one hundred and fifty FTE or if we're talking about potentially considerably more. And that, of course, gets into what level of reserves we're willing to be looking at in the rest. So if we have enough, I certainly want to be looking at improving the ratio or doing both of the above. And if we're only looking at one fifty, it kind of becomes a tougher discussion.
So you're looking, you use the one fifty at this, so look at the one fifty. The one fifty will not count, like, we're expecting another two hundred and fifty students in the system. And those we will staff in addition to the one fifty. So the one fifty would assume the same number of kids in the system as we're looking at it and really looking at how. And we wanted it to specifically apply to PAT members, so teachers, counselors, librarians, social workers, and anti-impact workload. So like that, those are some of the things that we're doing. Any of these positions impact workload. So, and you're just looking at a difference. I mean, I think you're kind of looking at what's the, like, how, how many strategies are you trying to spread it across? And how target it and, and like, what kind of impact are you really trying to make with the strategy that you're naming?
And I guess what I'm, what I'm wanting to understand is, you know, one hundred and fifty teachers is about fifteen million dollars or so. What I'm wanting, what I'm wanting to understand at this point in time, in terms of our budget for next year, if we end up getting to a five percent reserve versus a four percent versus a three percent, I mean, what above the fifteen million are we looking at?
So here's what I'll tell you. And we're looking at roughly the thirteen million in staffing. We're looking at two million in days. We're looking at roughly three point eight million that was in the central supports, which includes things like the dual language immersion expansion, it includes athletics, it includes a number of other things that you, that we've named as being school-based, but they are centrally supported school-based services. We are looking at taking us down to a five percent reserve level for anything that we would want us to be able to sustain over time. So staffing will go down to five percent. I will also bring forward a list of one-time budget investments that are ones that I would, I will propose to you to go take ourselves below the five percent threshold in order to do the one-time investments on some things that'll include like curriculum. But there's, they're clear one-time investments, you don't need to be able to sustain them over time. And I believe in the circumstance we're in right now, that that's a wise use of a one-time resource. So, and I don't know how far below the five percent I'm going to suggest that we go, but I will bring you a list of one times. I would not do, and are you tracking what I'm saying when I'm doing this? Okay, but I think anything that we're doing that is staffing, you want to be above the five percent threshold. Does that make sense?
So we know we're consistent.
Yeah. There's a, there's an additional one point nine million beyond what I just said that then gets you down to the, that is what's remaining from the four point six million that we just learned we had that is, that I haven't put either in central or in staffing yet. But it will, like, right now, the kinds of things that I'm putting there are like doing teacher mentors, because it's been a real, because if we add a hundred and fifty new teachers to the system, sufficiently doing, providing mentorship for them. So anyway, that's got a little bit of a, another set of things. But it's, I haven't started parsing that. That's the kind of stuff I'm going to bring you on the seventeenth. But it gives you a sense of what it all is. And the hundred and fifty staff is the amount that we're looking at for school-based staffing, for teachers' school-based staffing. The continuation of the investment we already made, the sixty-eight classified staff we just put into schools continues. So that was a concern of PFSP, is making sure that that continues. Yes, it does. So, does that give you enough of a sense here? Yeah. And again, we're expecting another two hundred and, we're projected for another two hundred and fifty students. So that would then be resourced in addition to, so we wouldn't then take that out of the one fifty.
So I had a question about, I'm looking at the high school challenges and I'm thinking about the high school action team and the different suggestions that they had. Where do those fit in here? Or is that, is that a surprise bucket of money we have someplace else?
Some of both. So, but in terms of this, looking at the counseling ratios, so the two big recommendations from the high school action team, just to remind folks, one was around just more college and career readiness, access opportunity, and incentivizing high school. The other is around an early response system where, and really, so while that came out of the high school action team, it's not only intended to be about the high schools. Because we know students being on track with attendance and positive behaviors in schools, all about success in high school, but it's success at every level. And so, so you see some of the recommendations, can you go to the recommendations? Include the, the counseling ratio, the potential of assigning FTE and then directing it to be used for enhanced electives or more opportunities in that regard. In the central budget allocation, we've also made a budget request regarding a central position to coordinate early response system and that sort of thing. So, so that one is spread in a, in a couple of different budget recommendations, so.
The other things I would, I would just add is the additional wraparound supports to provide interventions is part of an early response system. That's sort of the boots-on-the-ground piece of the early response system. And as she alluded to, in the centrally allocated budgets, we've made several requests as well to support high school action team. And then the second place, I would say, is just, again, the additional electives around career preparation and career exploration and that career exploration course in ninth grade. Those are all directly tied to the high school action team recommendations.
Okay. Well, I think that's where at least I would get more directive, if you're asking about where we would direct things. You know, if you're putting money in to, for example, expanding career learning CTE opportunities, I definitely, yes. And enhancing counseling ratio to three hundred and fifty, I wouldn't want that counselor to be off doing something else. I'm thinking lower that number for our counselors, they have way too many students already. And then when you have a lack of capacity to deliver student interventions down here at the bottom, early response, to me, I'd be much more interested in that than I am in some of the other things that are listed here.
Yeah, I could just tack to him on that and agree. I mean, I think given the, the integrity and the depth of the work of the high school action team, I would really want to see whether it's in this or in the central budget, or, you know, all of the above, that we follow through on that and make that real and make sure that schools are adhering to that. So that's really important to me, so the pieces that you named. Counseling at, at all grades does seem to me like to be an important, an important piece here. Yeah. And then the reading specialists at the younger grades, if I'm recalling correctly, that was something that we put in, was, we were getting very promising results and then we had to cut. So I don't know if this is the same restoring.
We've had a number of variations on it.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So, and this is, you know, this is really hard, because this gets back to, you know, kind of what we were saying before in terms of trying to balance, you know, the very real need and, and desire that we all have to make sure that classroom, you know, class sizes are lower, but also recognizing that these are all, everything here, our kids need and want to succeed. So knowing that we can't, bless you, not that we can't have it all. And that there's been clearly a very high expectation built up that the one hundred and fifty FTE, I mean, I think the shorthand for that is classroom, right? But it's, it can be a harder conversation to say, well, even, you know, A, I don't think the one hundred and fifty, the way it's been laid out would be enough to significantly reduce class sizes all across, you know, in every school across this district. So that's one piece. Versus, you know, some mix of, and I don't know what the precise mix is, of some reduction, knowing that there needs to be relief in that area, and yet that these, these various strategies, things like counseling, things like enacting the high school action team recommendations, things like reading specialist in the early grades, not only are going to help reduce workload, but are really going to have a strong impact. So I guess I'm sort of coming on some kind of mix, but recognizing that it's really tough because it's just not enough resource.
Right. Well, I think another piece that you have to consider is within the contract now, we have this increase in elementary school teacher planning time. And how do you get that planning time without adding specials or, you know, being very creative? So librarians, more art teachers, whatever it takes to.
Right. At one time, we had our, we had a clear plan and goal to have a certified librarian in every school.
Yes, we did.
So, you know, so weighing that. But again, I say that knowing that there's the mix.
Matt?
So I think the, you know, getting to the, the specific issues around class size, particularly those, those classes that are significantly high. I think we talked about this, and this is, I think, the benefit of really discussing class size versus workload and what do they mean and what are the relationship and, or what is the relationship? So I think, I think what I, I would like to see is how do we, how do we create some flexibility in our budget? So when we see class size as being, being a significant issue around for, for either the teachers or for a particular, you know, segment within a school, we can invest in that particular area. So it might be a one-off or two-off, but it. So it might be a one-off or two-off, but it really is sort of the flexibility of saying, this doesn't, this isn't working right. Let's find a way to, to create a, some relief with additional FTE. I think my, my experience, so that's one thing, the sort of this idea of flexibility around, around staffing. The other piece, though, and, and this is more sort of my, you know, from the heart, if you will, you know, my experience on a daily basis is with kids who are served by this district and districts around the Portland metro area that have the deepest disparities, that had the hardest relationship with education, whose families have the hardest relationship with education. And, and oftentimes, it is, it is the, the challenges that exist outside of the classroom that prevent success inside the classroom. So I, I tend to have a broader definition of what wraparound services include. But, but in terms of this, I would be much more inclined to say, how do we find, how do we find solutions to help support workload issues? And by workload issues, I mean kids that are ready to enter into a classroom to learn. And they're getting support from counselors, they're getting reading support or other support from media specialists. I think that's a, that makes a big impact on the readiness of these kids to really participate in class. And it also is more adults. I mean, I've been through schools where you have these roving educational specialists that are sort of the, the jack or Jane of all trades, that I know the kids, identify them. They have other responsibilities within the school, but they're really, they really help to focus individual kids in particular areas. So I like that idea, too. Of course, I wouldn't, I'd be negligent if I didn't say social workers as well. But really, the breadth of, of wraparound services, I think, could make a significant improvement, both on outcomes, but also on, on workload for teachers.
I'm totally confused. Brought forward this staffing thing, I have now, I'm up to sixty-eight questions without, that doesn't count the follow-ups, that just deals with this little section. Now, it seems to me like this, and then I get these two questions here, neither of these questions make any sense to me. Well, I think there's two ways to approach this. I don't see us going either way. I mean, one way to approach it is to sit down and come up for once with an actual foundation level. What is, what is it that we have in this school system, in each school? A foundational level of what that means. What does that mean? We don't have that. We're not even close to that. We got milestones, we got this. We don't have any idea what that means. And so I could go that direction. And then once you get a foundational level of, so everybody has certain things, then you move to building on top of that. Now, building on top of that can mean a lot of things. It can mean wraparound services. It can mean, and then you prioritize building, you prioritize building on top. I could live with that. Or the other way to do it is the superintendent brings forth a, a budget, and we argue over it and say, I don't like that. I think that money should be spent over here, and we vote on it. I could live with that. But I can't, I don't, I can't live with this unless they're gonna ask, ask, answer all the questions and then move to one of those two things?
So here's what I'll invite you to, two things, Steve. So right up there on the top where it says core program implementation, we actually have in previous budgets, and this is one where I would be happy to sit down with you. In fact, tomorrow, I'll set a time, and I'll clear my calendar and spend the morning with you, walking you through what that is. Because part of what we've done is identifying a K eight, here's what a core program is. In a high school, here's what a core program is. We have not been able to fully fund that yet, as you're identifying. So like part of what we've prioritized is how are we getting every school able to offer that core program? And that was one of the ones of like, how do we, do we prioritize that at the very top? Or we say actually getting every school able to get to full offering of the core program as the, which is, I think, sort of consistent with what you're saying there.
Kind of what I'm saying. It's not really what I'm saying.
But come on in tomorrow, and I will walk you through and give you, and do your sixty-eight questions.
I can't come in until about eleven o'clock.
We'll work on calendar after the meeting. So, but happy to walk you through that.
Well, but, okay.
One other thing I would be remiss to not clarify is that all of our ratio FTE, as we allocate it, includes our equity formula. And so, started last year and continuing forward this year, eight percent of all the FTE is allocated specifically by the number of students in a school that qualify for free and reduced meals. So four percent allocated by that. And then four percent allocated by the number of students who are in the state's combined underserved category. So that includes the four racial groups that we have historically underserved, as well as students identified for ESL or special education support. So, so that equity allocation remains in, as we are looking at all the formula considerations. So just wanted to clarify that that's not gone away. And of course, as you add FTE through the ratio, you get that, the impact of the equity allocation improves over the more FTE you allocate.
Is that, is that included in some way with the core program?
It does affect the core program in a couple of ways, yes.
Part of the core program? In other words, we have an eight percent. So in those particular schools, we then have taken that eight percent and built that into a, into a core, part of the core program beyond what the foundational level is? In other words, is the core program for school A different for school B?
No, the core program is consistent across the schools.
So then the eight percent sits on top of that, and then on top of that, and that becomes the core program? So then on top of that eight percent, then we set the other things on top that we're doing in other schools, too? Is that how it works?
I'm, I think I'm using core program differently than maybe you are.
Thank you for your pardon?
I think I, I think the way you're using core program may not be quite how I'm using it.
Well, the superintendent was saying that a core program was a foundational level.
Right.
So we have a foundational level, and then if we add the eight percent, that creates a foundational level at that school that's different. And then, so that foundational level would be the foundational level plus eight percent?
So here's, I'm gonna back you up a little bit. So the core program is really what are the, what are the offerings at each school?
Right.
We then are providing a staffing allocation to each school. And for the years that we've been in budget, like, like tightness, budget slashing, a lot of folk, a lot of schools have not been able to offer the full core program, or we've been patching it together. So last year, the effect of the equity formula is perhaps you were not quite able to, it may have let you offer the core program, whereas some other schools may not have been able to. You may have been able to just not cut as much, because you got a boost. In the go-forward, part of what it does is it gives you more, it's the weighting that lets you have more adult attention for kids that we've said have been historically underserved. So part of what it does, it just gives you, it's not a huge amount. But what it does is it gives you more adults in the school in order to have more significant ability to have relationship with kids. So it isn't specifically like you've got X number more teachers, but you've got some bump in what are, who are the adults there serving kids. So that's, that's essentially what it.
Eight percent would give you a pretty good bump.
It's an eight percent holdback that then is reallocated. You're, it's not eight percent. If the holdback is out of the whole pool, we hold back eight percent. And then it gets reallocated based on the number of kids in that category in your school. So you don't receive eight percent more. You're getting, that's the amount we held back and then reallocated back to schools with this population.
So there's not actually a foundational level that meets our.
We've identified what the foundation is.
No, we don't have a foundational level that meets our budget.
Right. Have we been able to fully fund that yet? No, exactly.
Well, but that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, you're correct.
We should have a foundational level that meets our budget.
We agree.
And then that foundational level, we should decide, okay, can we, is that it?
We should have the quality education.
Should we go?
The quality education model, our own call. We did the same thing when we did high school system design. We said, here's the core, core program we want every student to have access to, regardless of which high school you're in. And we were really clear about what that was, including this counselor ratio, where we wanted to get to a one to three hundred rather than one to four hundred. But we are really specific about what we wanted. We've been nowhere close. And we actually did not do it with the idea that you needed a bunch of new resource, but we have had less resource every year since we defined it. So like.
Forty million dollar cut, I think, in the first year or so.
So we don't have what I'm talking about.
So we do. So the way that we arrived at the eight percent for the equity allocation is because the, the majority of our schools were able to address all the core program requirements if they had the FTE allocated in that first ninety-two percent of the total pot. And so that's how we arrived at this. And then in a few cases, we do additional allocations. So certain schools that were quite small were having trouble in the K eight or pre-K eight model meeting their world language requirement for all their middle-grade students. And so we would do an additional allocation of a world language teacher in those schools in order to meet that core program. So, and again, there's.
Those non-formula FTE.
Yeah, so let me just, on the technical side, if you look at the ratio, what, what we know is that no formula in and of itself can be perfect, but you need one. Like you need some sort of way to allocate resources. So we do the, we allocate the resources. But then if you look up there, there's something called non-formula FTE. That's kind of a bucket of FTE where we recognize that, for whatever reason, the ratio failed us in that particular school community. And that's the bucket that we use to address core program implementation concerns. So right after we, we allocate the FTE, the RAs are meeting with every single principal, and they're saying, and they have a list of, here's what the core program is. And they say, where are you falling short with regard to being able to deliver this core program? And then we deliver FTE according to that non-formula bucket to address just that concern.
But there's, but there's, there's things on top of that that we add. For instance, we spent four hundred thousand dollars to get in somebody to help us deal with the Common Core.
Well, that's the central. No, we, we.
Earlier in the, earlier in the year, we did.
I think you're thinking of the restorative justice support that we have contracted for. That was the four hundred thousand dollars. And, and so that's a wraparound service, as Director Morton was referring to. So additional support in our schools where the disproportionate discipline is really staggering, and we're really trying to change those outcomes by having, by, you know, utilizing a new strategy and then training other schools to utilize that strategy to change that.
So getting back a little bit on priorities or where I'm thinking about. And I think actually, Director Beal, I've heard you say this earlier. I don't know if this is still kind of where you're sitting. But the idea of spreading it around generally, it's really hard to show an impact. So while just adding to the FTE ratio, I, what I appreciate about that is it allows some flexibility at the building level to, to target areas where you know you're insufficient in the building. At the same time, I, I think that with reinvestments, we do have to be really strategic. And so just some things that kind of come to my mind as I'm looking at high schools, that really ninth, tenth grade, I mean, it's just been, for as long as I've been working with youth, people have just been really clear that if kids are off track in ninth grade, there's so much more at risk. And so I don't know if it's something that we can even do with a, a transition from eighth to ninth. But if they can earn a core credit even in that summer before they get in, they're already on their way. They, they've experienced success. And I'd be really curious about that. The special education, I appreciate Director Atkins bringing up that inclusion model. What do we need to do to support our teachers, to kind of push in? That, that really resonates with me. Because it does, while, while we're moving, while we're moving to this idea that every kid is our student to, to educate, not somebody else's problem, that also takes some additional support. So whether that's teacher mentors, I don't know what that looks like, but that target.
Well, having the, I mean, the model that we have is the principal and working with the whole team and the entire building to have a whole different culture and way of working with the resources they do have. So again, that's why I said, maybe it isn't necessarily new and additional staffing per se, but just wanting to signal that that's this culture shift we wanna have and a priority.
ESL, the, the content-based English language development, something we still haven't gotten our ESL right. We're technically in compliance. CA, congratulations for us. But there have to be many pathways. Dual-language immersion is one pathway, but we really need to find other on-ramps for students. So I don't know how that, how that pilot is going, or if it can be expanded. But I'm just really interested in that type of intervention. The, the maintaining a point two-five FTE is, is actually, as we were going through these, I was thinking, you know, what about when you're in a school and you don't have a really large ESL population, or a special ed population? But you still have the need, and you're in, that's in the school, and how hard that is to support sometimes, just when it, when it comes to formula. So that really spoke to me. So those are, those are kind of my thinking, is that I'm feeling right now to be a little bit more targeted, whether it's counselors or CTE, I'm not sure what's the right mix, what that is. But those are kind of what's going through my head, is that it's feeling more targeted rather than general FTE ratio.
Director Curler and Andrew, do either one of you have any comments? I think, I think everybody here has had at least one, one go. Oh, you haven't either. Okay. Well, there we go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead then, Bobby.
So to answer your question here from where I'm sitting, I, I agree in terms of the high school action team that we need to be paying attention to those recommendations. So if we're looking at kind of specific strategic investments, I would agree in the career prep and exploration. Early response team, I'm particularly interested in a social worker, kind of care action team responder. And the counselor-student ratio is a, is a big deal for us to start trying to have an impact at the high school level. If you're looking at ratio, I would agree that the ninth grade class size in particular is where I'd probably wanna put some energies if we're just looking at ratio investments. And I guess I'm really curious to understand when the workload committee is going to start reporting back and whether or not we can hear any of their input prior to actually making our final budget decisions. Because one of the things, I guess one of the things I hear all the time is the workload of our English teachers, or teachers who are grading papers and doing some really intensive grading outside of class time. And so I don't want us to cut corners for our kids and have teachers not assign writing, because it just takes too much to. So, you know, that would be one area in particular where I'd like to understand what the workload committee might recommend in some of these areas. Because writing is such a life skill for high school students. I don't want us to be cutting corners there somehow, some way. But I don't know if that's the group that we would.
It won't be operational by the time, in the next two weeks, which is when they need to go the way in by March. Yeah. So I mean, however.
Is that the depth that they're going to be getting into?
That is the kind of thing they're gonna be looking at. And we, so I will say, one of the resources we did leave in place that we will continue is the, we did a dollar amount for a pool to do scoring of essential skills work samplers for our high school students, because it was a workload issue that was identified previously. And, and the ESD was having less capacity to do this, and it was a big burden on our teachers as we're having more kids having to produce some.
So we are gonna be.
We're gonna, we'll continue that resource. So it's the, it's the type of example that you're talking about. And it is exactly the kind of thing I think will come up in the workload committee, or those kinds of things. Yeah.
So at the pre-K eight level, again, if you're looking at strategic investments, I guess I would, I would like to make sure that in terms of foundational levels of support, that every single K eight school has some level of librarian support and some level of counselor support. To me, that's just, should be a given somehow, some way. If you're looking at ratio supports, I mean, to me, it's in reading, it's in reading and literacy support. So whether that's K through three or whatever, that's where I would probably put those supports.
Great. Andrew?
Yeah. So I would like to echo some of the things that, that Director Regan said. I think she was, you know, definitely on the right track with a lot of that stuff. I think counselors, again, are a really important area. I think in terms of intervention and just having that relationship with the student, that's really important, both for keeping students in school and afterwards, having those connections to go past high school. Like other people have said, ninth grade, really important if we can support those more. Again, like Director Regan said, I would love to hear what the, the workload work group would say about a lot of this stuff. But since we don't have that information yet, and we won't for a while, you know, I guess I would just say, you know, I, I appreciate the, the language about wraparound service supports. I think that's great. But I think, again, that's something where if we're going to do it, we really need to be careful how we do it. So I would almost rather go with something where I feel like we're more comfortable. So I would almost rather go with something where I feel like we're more comfortable doing, like counselors, but if we can make that work, I'd love to see that as well, so, yeah.
Can I just do a quick follow-up, and then I'll let Tom say it?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, just real quick, just on the workload committee, in terms of the short-term piece of that, though, will that be operational by next fall?
Oh, please, by next fall, it just won't be in the budget process.
Right, but in terms of the, oh my gosh, you know, this is the second grade with 40 kids, or, you know, whatever the egregious, so that will address?
So the hope, we'll get, we'll work to put this together, so it'll be five PAT members, five district folks, and it'll be two-tiered, so they will have a million dollars, so that's another million I forgot to tell you in the list I was just making for you.
Okay.
So they'll have a million dollars to work with in order to be able to make recommendations about the kinds of things we're raising right here.
Right.
So if, in fact, they come up with an idea mid-year that is, here's an issue, we need a grading, some kind of grading support, you know?
Some of the flexibility.
They've got the ability to make those recommendations.
Right.
And it's both those immediate response ones, but also bigger, like, could they weigh in on budget kinds of things in the next budget cycle? Yeah, yeah.
And I, sorry, the one thing I forgot to mention earlier in my list of, it's the school improvement grants as they sunset, figuring out how we do the glide path is really important for the schools, because we've had this tremendous blessing of this extra huge influx of not only low, super low class sizes, all, all kinds of wraparound supports, and we've seen great results from that, so.
And that is included in the recommended focus and priority.
So figuring out, so we don't do the thing that we've done in the past as a district, is have this new grant and then have it go away.
Yes.
And I know you're aware of that, I just wanted to call that out.
Tom?
I actually resonated with Greg's comments, of, we want, we want to do things that are high impact, and, and we also want to just do things well. And so focusing probably gets us to those two things. And so as an example, for counselors, you said we set a goal for 1 to 300, and that would take seven FTE to get there. Well, if that's an effective strategy, we should go do it. And do that one thing, and then move to the next. Obviously, there's prioritization that needs to happen, but from a philosophical kind of budget process, that's where my head is at. And the other thing, just to remind the board, you know, from our priorities that we set, the career, technical, education is definitely one of them, and so I would hope that, that we move in that direction of making sure that, that we increase the offerings. So I, and I was, I'm still confused about the couns, I, I don't think counselors are that, I think they can help us get there, but I, if, so, we need to have the offerings beyond counselors.
Anybody else? Do you have everything you need?
That was really, that was really helpful. Yeah, that was good, exactly what you just gave us.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody? Thanks. So we'll move to our next agenda item, which is the first reading of the revised public contracting rules. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this?
So Neil Sullivan, our chief financial officer, and David Wine, I believe, are coming up to present this. Neil, yeah?
David Wine, Deputy CFO, and with me is Emily Courtney, who is the acting manager of our purchasing and contracting group. We were here for our first reading, you may recall, with Elaine Holt, Elaine Baker, rather, who left for the city of Hillsborough, and Emily has stepped up to run that group. We hire a new manager, so she's going to briefly walk you through this second first reading.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith and board members. As David said, Elaine was here on February 3rd with a first reading of proposed rules change, and that would take our small procurement of goods and services, lower threshold from 5,000 to 10,000, or upper threshold, I should say, from 5,000 to $10,000. In the course of that first reading and after, we realized that a couple of other small changes need, needed to be made as well for internal consistency. So I'm coming to you now with a second first reading, with that change taking our upper limit of small procurements to 10,000, also moving our intermediate procurement level lower threshold from 5 to 10, and then allowing minor amendments of small goods and services procurements up to a contract, total contract price of 12,000, which doubles it from where it was at 6,000.
Anybody have any questions? Oh, very good.
Just the changes here, based on recommendations and-
Right. Based on what we already discussed, right? Okay. So the proposed policy is posted on the board website, and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment being March 24th, 2014. Contact information for public comment will be posted with the policy, and the board will hold a second reading of the policy on March 31st, 2014. And thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, adjourned. The next meeting of the board will be held on March 10th, 2014. This meeting is adjourned.